Good evening, everyone. Thank you for joining us for the regular city council meeting Tuesday, February 25th, 2025 at 5:30. We'll begin by taking a very brief moment of silence. Thank you. Now, if I can ask, I see our engineer Cindy Cecil here. If you can lead us in the pledge of allegiance, please. Thank you, everyone. We will jump right in with our reports, and I will go to closed session report. Mr. Schultz?
Yes, good evening, council. Prior to tonight's session, councilman, closed session on three different items: potential litigation, real property negotiations, and oh, and the evaluation of the city attorney. As to all three matters, no action was taken that requires reporting under the Brown Act.
Thank you, Mr. Schultz. With that, we will move on to Mayor Councilmember Reports, announcements, and presentations. I will start to my left with Councilmember Echols.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Good evening, everyone. Just a couple of quick mentions. First off, I wanted to thank all our advisory bodies. It's the time of the month, the week, week and a half, when we have a flurry of advisory bodies, meetings taking place. I'm the liaison for the Planning Commission, and that meeting went extremely well. CFAC had a very informative meeting. I watched PWEB last night on the television. So, as I was watching PWEB, I just was reminded of how valuable all our advisory bodies are and the hard work that they do. So, I wanted to specifically call out each of our volunteers and thank them. Lastly, I'm continuing my city beautification efforts, which fall directly into economic vitality. I've continued my outreach with business owners, as well as just residents on the street, and I want to ask for some assistance with that. If anyone hearing my voice or watching this has an idea for beautification, or something that you've seen out in the city as you walk around or drive around, and you would like to pass that along to me as an opportunity for beautification, I would love to hear from you. The easiest way to get ahold of me is through the city website. Go to City Council, and my email is right there. Thank you.
Councilmember Edwards?
I love that. Thank you, Mayor. I attended the IWMA meeting a couple weeks ago. The focus, of course, is trying to make sure that we don't have a redundancy in our recycling programs when it comes to state and local municipalities. Right now, we are working closely on a battery program, as well as textiles, so clothing. Batteries, right now, you can locally return to miners, so that's something really important, that if you've got used batteries, you can take those to miners as of now. And then, I also wanted, because this is not a very common one, but sometimes, you know, if you're not somebody that likes to donate your clothes, you can take everything from old t-shirts, napkins, tablecloths. H&amp;M in San Luis, I know it's a large company, but they do do this program that's called H&amp;M Conscious, and you can take things, not even that you've purchased from them, and you can give them to them, and they actually do make them into new clothing items. So, there is an opportunity here in our area to do that. Secondly, I wanted to let people know about the annual citywide garage sale. I love this. It's coming up March 21st through the 23rd, and if you want to sign up to be placed on the map, you can call 805-225-7411, extension two, or go to info@moralbay.org and email there. Also, attended the CFAC, as the CFAC meeting, as a liaison to that meeting. It was really, I felt, one of the most honest, critical reviews and outlooks on our cap funding and the transfers of funds, especially with regard to Measure Q and E. Our Revenue Opportunities Subcommittee is continuing right along, doing their work, trying to generate some ideas for us, some opportunities there, and they'll continue to do that through June. One of the things that came up was the idea of, you know, getting more college students here, marketing Moro Bay as, either during WOW Week and getting them here for that week, or consistently with maybe like a student discount program. And so, they started talking about some of those ideas, and it was very interesting. I'm looking forward to seeing where that goes. I also just want to thank ahead of time Chair Stephen Peck for his report that he'll be doing tonight shortly.
Thank you. Councilmember LaFaye?
Thank you, Mayor. I also attended the Integrated Waste Management Meeting with Cindy. Got to learn a little bit about the organization and what they're all about. I also met with the Seniors 55-plus at Delmar Park in the idea of adding four more pickleball courts. So, what we're attempting to do right now is we're going to be surveying the pickleball players, where they're coming from, the usage of the courts, and I will be giving, hopefully, a report at the Parks and Rec Commission on the vitality of adding four more courts. The reason why, if we could get eight courts at Delmar, we'll be able to hold tournaments, and people will be coming from outside the area, and then we'll be able to increase the TOT. So, that is something that I'm working on, too. I also went to the Planning Commission meeting. I wanted to thank Eric Myers to, as he stepped up to be our chairman. I think he's going to be a great chairman, and it was a pleasant surprise to see the Planning Commission meeting, and it just was a different vibe than the ones I've been through the last year or so. So, thank you, Eric, and the rest of the Planning Commission staff. I also went to the CFAC meeting, and Stephen and his group gave a great presentation. So, I think that the finances of the city are so important, and I'm still trying to learn and understand all the numbers. I also met with the SEIU as a greet and meet. They're the union that represents about 48 classified employees of the city of Moro Bay. So, I got a little chance to understand what they do, and it was interesting. So, I have a little bit more background there. And I also went to Zara's Open House on Sunday. It was a community open house on trying to preserve the old Moro Bay Elementary School. So, we're trying to create a grassroots organization to preserve at least that school, 1936 building. That's all.
Well, we've had some rain recently, and the weather has been beautiful. And I wanted to give a shout out first to Moro Bay in Bloom. I've noticed recently the planters downtown look phenomenal, and I really think it sets a tone for the user experience in Moro Bay. And I wanted to acknowledge that and just give them a big thank you. I, too, attended the CFAC meeting, and I found it really interesting. There were really great revenue-producing ideas that were shared by members Johnson and Dorfman. And I, it was really awesome to see that all five councilmembers were there. I felt like that was a really good sign. The mayor and I attended an offshore wind subcommittee meeting with Supervisor Donna T. Legg and a county staff person for an update on the Mott-McDonald and Rincon study, studies that are being done. And from my perspective, my understanding is that offshore wind is not likely to happen for at least four more years. And I asked why we don't just cancel these contracts for these studies, because they're kind of, you know, not really necessary right now, but they said they're too far underway. So, that's already kind of been done. But for the communications portion of the funding that was given to the county for this, from the state, they're wanting to cut that back, because there's not so, there's really no reason to do it, they think. And so, what they're going to do is be presenting the information that they find, the studies find, and, you know, recording the feedback from the comments that people give. And I, that's coming up, I think, in September. I'm unclear what will happen with the rest of the funds. I don't know if the money goes back to the state, if it gets absorbed by the county, or if the city will be able to receive any of that. I'm not sure about that yet. I attended the 3CE four-hour orientation as the alternate to the CE. And even though it was four hours, it was actually really interesting. After these two, these two energy meetings that I recently had, I think it was last week, I heard from both the county and 3CE that they consider Moro Bay to be in an opportunity position due to the fact that we have the PG&E substation here, and that we really aren't, they don't feel that we're achieving our potential. This makes me wonder what the potential would be if the substation wasn't there, as it's nearly on oceanfront property. And with the risks involved with any large energy project, I personally would love to see a costs-benefit analysis of both. For instance, with a project like the Cloisters, what's the difference between revenue to the city from property tax and having more people in town spending money for sales tax versus having an energy, a big energy project, commercial energy project? I'm also curious about the city's current franchise agreement with PG&E, since it dates back to the 70s, I think. And to my knowledge, it's never been updated, especially in light of the fact that they've, you know, recently added new infrastructure in the last few years, like the new towers next to the bike park. I attended another energy meeting. I attended a best information meeting at the Benedict, held by, held by, or sponsored by the great state of New California. And it was, it had people there that lived in Moss Landing area, and they have kind of organized and are collecting data, and they were sharing that, about their experiences with the Moss Landing fires. And there was also a biochemical and mechanical engineer that was talking about different ways to clean up sites like that. I found that really interesting. And then, finally, I held my town hall meeting as supervisor, I mean, Councilmember LaFaye just mentioned, and that was on Sunday, and it was regarding the Moro Elementary School site. I had a really good turnout, despite him saying I didn't really advertise it very well. I had, I had, I had about 60 people there, I counted, which included four of us up here. There's clearly a large percentage of residents who value the site and would like to keep it in the community. It was a good starting off point, as people were able to leave their contact for future committees and fundraising efforts. Some of the ideas that were presented were questions regarding the land transfer, and how if the school building was paid for by fundraising efforts of Moro Bay residents, how can the district sell it and keep the proceeds? There was a big interest in having the buildings deemed historic, with some in attendance already undertaking research on this. There was a lot of interest in initial fundraising to obtain a land use attorney with school surplus property experience. There was mention of the Naylor Act, in which the schools are sold as surplus property. The community in which they're sold have the opportunity to purchase a percentage of the land for 25 cents on the dollar if they can prove that they've been using the area for recreation and open space, and that there is nowhere else in the community for these particular uses. There was a tremendous amount of concern over the fact that the district has formally, that has informed Family Partnership, the charter school there, that they need to be out by the end of June. The school is attended by many Moro Bay students, and it really fills a need that some find lacking in traditional education. There's a Facebook page named Preserve Historic Moro Bay. If anyone is interested, there's a lot of networking that can happen there and information. They are also planning on doing what I think is a cool project, where they host a story night at the Montessori School, where people can share their stories about their experiences at the school. There was a question as to why the community had never been engaged in a conversation regarding the sale and the potential purchase when the city had the opportunity to have the first right of refusal. It was mentioned that it was great that four councilmembers were in attendance, including the mayor, but that they can't engage in the discussion due to the Brown Act, and that council should agendize a public discussion so everyone can share ideas. And if anyone is interested in discussing this or helping in any way, please don't hesitate to reach out to me, and I can connect you with the right people.
Thank you. So, yes, I think you got the gist, that we've all attended all the advisory board meetings, and Zar's Town Hall meeting, in which we were all at separate areas because of the Brown Act requirements. I, along with Councilmember Landrum, 3CE is a new advisory board we've taken on in Moro Bay this year, so we had a training session, the offshore wind with the county. I want to remind everyone, we have city goals coming up, March 13th. I want to thank all of the advisory boards. I shifted over to the Liaison for Public Work, so I attended that meeting, as well as the CFAC meeting. But thank you to all the new and returning members of those advisory boards, and those of you who stepped up to chair those. We truly do appreciate it. You are the connection of the community to the council, and it is just such a vital role. So, thank you all for that. I was not here at the last meeting, two weeks ago. I zoomed in, because we were in Washington, DC, myself, the city manager, and the harbor director. I'd like to thank, again, the Moro Bay Commercial Fishing Association Cable Liaison, who sends us each year for lobbying for dredge funds. As of right now, we do have two dredges scheduled for Moro Bay. Our regular harbor dredge that is done for the, by the entrance to the bay, the mouth of the bay, and then our interchannel dredge, which has been postponed because of the steelhead that have been in the back bay the last few years. So, those are both still scheduled. The tone there, we had met with our local legislatures, our Congressman Carbaugh, Senator Schiff, Panetta and Padilla, as well as attending the CMAC Conference with Army Corps Engineers, and then spent a day that was lobbying on the Hill. The tone in DC is a little different right now with the new administration. Since I've been back there, this was my third year, and I think people are still trying to get their bearings. We met with Bohm. They have an interim, so they're still waiting for a director to be appointed. The tone, as was shared by Councilmember Landrum, is that they see on the West Coast a pause, they see a pause in any new offshore wind, and certainly not providing subsidies at a federal level right now. The Congressman Carbaugh still has a dedicated earmark from last year for us. If it makes it through budget this year, that was for climate resilience, that was $250,000. And we have some claims, we met with FEMA, that are still pending. Takes a lot of work and a lot of time on our staff's behalf, but hopefully, we'll get those last few through. And it is Item 7D, if you want information on that, a little more in-depth, that you can look, look at our return information from the trip. Struggling to find that there. I'm going to have office hours. I will announce next month at our first meeting, and anybody who wants information about the trip to Washington, DC, or any of the information that Councilmember Landrum was sharing, that we've met with the offshore wind companies, the county, and some others, and the 3CE Energy Group. I hope to share those with you at the Town Hall meeting. With that, I will turn it over to the city manager.
Okay. Thank you, Mayor. I wanted to follow up on at least one thing. Last city council meeting, Councilmembers LaFaye and Landrum, I believe, had speak about the warming center. I just wanted to let, get back to the council and the public, that we are, this police department, police chief, and her team are working with Street Outreach 805 to look into the grant that, that the county issued. We had done some research in the past regarding opening up a warming center here in the city on our own, and we ran into some challenges. But this time, with this grant, we'll see, we'll see what may come, what may come into fruition. And as councilmembers suggested, we are getting into the new city goal-setting process, and thank you, Mayor, for reminding everybody of the March 13th Community Forum is going to be in this room at 5:30. It's going to be a very community-driven event. It's going to be highly engaged. We wanted to, we're going to go have a breakout sessions for the community to offer your input, and we look forward to that. Also, as a part of the goal-setting process, Department Heads and I are visiting the advisory committees. Last week, we presented at the CFAC and at the PWEB regarding the current goals and the future goals, future goal, input regarding future goals. And you know, the holidays really is just around the corner. I say that because the city are, the Recreation Division is already looking for, looking for help for summer programs, and then also prepare for the holiday season. We are working with the chamber and visit Moro Bay, hopefully, to boost our current holiday events. That's all I have.
Thank you very much. With that, we will move on to Subcommittee Reports, Water Reclamation Facility. Any updates? Mr. Qualek?
Thank you, Mayor. There are no updates.
Thank you, Mr. Qualek. Moro Bay Power Plant?
No updates for the Moro Bay Power Plant.
Thank you. Offshore Wind?
No updates for offshore wind.
Thank you. And Downtown Design District?
I'll just use this as an opportunity to remind the council and public that March 18th will be the public forum for the Downtown Design District at the regularly scheduled Planning Commission meeting.
Thank you very much. With that, we are going to move into presentations. Mr. Peck, thank you for joining us, the Chair of the Citizens Finance Committee.
Is it on? Here we go. First, thank you for your attendance at the meeting last week. It's important to our group. We're fully staffed now. We're functioning well. They, I think, perceived the importance of the matter they were discussing with you in attendance. This is our annual report of our activities and some of our observations, recommendations. This report is called for by the bylaws. You have about a 13 or 14-page presentation. I won't go over every one of those slides, assuming that not only did you hear it at the CFAC meeting, but probably reviewed it already. First, I'd like to go over what we did. We, first of all, reviewed the transactions for 2324. You heard the discussion last, last week on that. We had joint meetings with the city council and the PWEB, and did some joint work with the HAB. I think that is very important. Thank you for initiating that several years ago. We reviewed the 2025, 2425 budget proposals, looked at a mid-year adjustment for Police and Fire. We initiated a task force with members Dorfman and Johnson to look at revenue sources. They are on track to have recommendations for you by the end of this fiscal year on a number of topics, many of which are kind of being discussed now. I don't believe we'll come up with anything revolutionary or new, but maybe something that will maybe nudge your action one way or another on those items. We had information training on the tax sources and trends. It's important to understand the difference between the measure money, the measure sales taxes, and your general sales taxes, because the measure money follows you around. When you buy a car in San Luis Obispo, we get that money. If you go someplace else, we get that money for Q and E. We don't get it for sales tax. So, there's actually a difference in the profile of those revenue sources that we understand better now. The CFAC's functions and duties have changed over time. Three or four years ago, the council modified our responsibilities. We used to look at a 10-year financial forecast. We don't anymore, except starting this year again. Thank you for that. Quarterly financial reports, we used to review the audit. That was taken out of our review several years ago. But we still review, as part of the Citizens Oversight Committee, the activities funded with Q and E, and the expenditures for those motor, those measures and council, with council initiatives. As part of our other responsibilities, we're asked by you to comment on the transparency, citizen participation, the legibility of the budget information, the financial information that can sometimes be a little bit daunting. One of the things I wanted to pause on for a minute was the, sort of the rubric we used to look at, the city's compliance with the measure, measure Q and E. Let me go to the next slide. This is the, this is the table that is involved in, sorry, there we go, about the authorities for the use of the Q and E money. Q was primarily focused on police and fire and potholes and some storm drainage maintenance. E had a much broader list of uses, including maintaining the police department services, fire, 24/7 paramedic services, 9/11 emergency response, health and emergency preparedness, keeping beaches and public areas safe and clean, retaining and attracting businesses, basically our economic development, economic sustainability task, street maintenance, and a couple other items. So, when we look at this, and as you have asked us, we look at it from the lens of your council priorities, and from this lens as well. And I can say probably to a person on the committee, we look at these tasks, or these activities that you described to the voters, as our core responsibilities. These are sort of our vital organs that we think about as we review the projects. Overall, as far as the conformity with the expenditures, we didn't make any adverse comments, other than the comments you heard about some of the process issues, how money is reallocated to other activities. We'd like to be more involved in that, so that it's easier for us and easier for you to say, yes, that's in compliance with Q and E and the council priorities. Other findings include the fact that we're cognizant of the fact that Q and E revenues have declined for 2425. Later on in the presentation, I'll give a little brief item about what happens if that decline, which is kind of a post-COVID pattern, continues, and what happens if it sort of goes up a little bit as HDL is projected. That's of concern, and it's of concern because personnel operating O and M is becoming a bigger and bigger chunk of that Q and E dollar, which means that capital is becoming a smaller and smaller chunk of that, of that item. We also wanted to comment that completing the citywide capital and facilities planning project is essential to sorting out what we ought to be spending Q and E money on, as well as city general fund capital money, and that there was a, at least at the end of 2324, there was a significant backlog of Q and E-funded capital projects. This is probably, the table on the right is probably hard to read for the public, but basically what it says is that revenues, Q and E revenues have been flat or declining since post-COVID. There's a, there's a belief among retailers and other business folks that a lot of the money that was generated during COVID has now been burned off. Savings accounts have been depleted to some degree, and is there really more growth out there? I think that's something the city ought to look at critically, is that will we continue the flat or declining pattern that we've been seeing the last two or three years, post-COVID, or will that number kind of rebound to something more long-term? You'll notice on the slide that it indicates that in 2020, 21, 24% of the revenue was spent on departmental services, and 76% was spent on capital. That is literally flipped over, so that now we're spending 2/3 of Q and E money on ongoing services, which we presume have to go on ongoing services, which we presume have to go into the, into the future, and a much smaller piece on capital. The next three or four slides show sort of how the pattern has been over the last 10 years. We wanted to sort of bring that to council's attention. You can see on this slide that even post, even during the, in 2015 and on, revenues were flat. We haven't seen much real growth in this fund or sales tax, taxable sales in general over the last nine years. If you take out inflation and look at the real rate of growth, it's been about 1% per year, which means there hasn't been a substantial increase in the actual volume of goods and services, taxable goods and services in the community. Not on the slide, but of interest is that overall, the community's sales taxes have grown, taxable sales have grown up about 4%, peeling off the, a little over 3% inflation over that period gives you 1%. Fortunately, the city breaks that down into geographic areas. So we found that over that nine-year period, the downtown share of that actually increased 9.8% per year. However, Quintana grew at about 2% per year. The Embarcadero grew at about 3% per year. And North Morro Bay about 4.3% per year. So it's almost the reverse of the, what I'd think it would be. So your primary areas, Quintana and Embarcadero are flatter than the other areas of the community. It's probably something you got to break down and look at to see how that's, how that's working. That's probably something HDL can do for you. Another slide showing sort of the, the pattern generally of the sales tax revenue. And then coming to this one, which basically shows a continuation of the post-COVID trend, where by 2030, we would end up with about $4 million in Q and E revenue, rather than the $4.6 million that we have today. And in a real terms, it would go from $3.9 million to $2.6 million. This next slide shows the, a couple other options that the, the trend lines on the right-hand side of the chart show a couple of options. The solid declining one is the post-COVID trend. But at the request of Councilmember Eccles and the finance staff, we actually plotted the other ones. The next one up is the HDL line, the 3% growth, 2% growth they're projecting over the first couple of years and 3% growth after that. And the next two lines above that are the five-year, the five-year growth rate, if you go back far enough, and then the 10-year growth rate. I think what this shows us is that we're not going to grow as fast as we have in the past, and there's a potential that we could be flat. And the graph shows that little gray area is the area we have for capital. So as you think about how much money you have to spend on hardware and infrastructure and filling potholes, that number is going to go down over time. I think the message is there are choices that need to be made. They're not easy choices, but this is, this was becoming, this was your kind of growth fund for services and infrastructure, and it can't be that anymore. We'll need to make some hard choices going forward. Finally, I'll wrap up by saying that in terms of compliance, maintenance, and transparency, you know, continue to do what you're doing with the joint meetings with PWA and CFAC and HAB and the committee membership on the Harvard, the Waterfront Master Plan is great. We love that. We'd like to be involved in decisions earlier on. It would be difficult for us next year to try and make a finding of consistency if we weren't also involved in approving a transfer of funds from one activity to another. So, because your charge to us is we're going to, we're going to follow that Q and E dollar until it gets spent on something, an activity. So that's what we're pledging to do is just involve us in how that activity needs to be modified. Finally, just the, in presenting the information to the public, your improvements to this venue are urgent. This is a very, reading missed screen from your Chair Mayor is difficult for somebody with even 2020 eyesight sometimes. And I can imagine what it's like on the television side of that, that equation. So we think that's a good choice. So I'll stop there and be available and answer any questions you might have. Again, thank you for your attendance last week. Thank you for the changes you've made to involve CFAC in the city's finances.
Thank you, Chairman Peck. Any questions? None right now. Thank you so much for all your work and CFAC's work and helping us chart this path. Thank you.
Thank you.
And I move into public comment. I have a few speaker slips. I'm going to start with them one at a time. The first speaker slip I have is going to be Judy Brown.
Good evening, everybody. I'm Judy Brown. I'm Terri Simon's wife. With a profound sense of loss, I announced Terri's passing on January 31st, 2025, after struggling with a fatal disease since 2018. Terri wouldn't allow me to speak publicly about his illness, so I'll not do so here tonight. But what I want to share with you is a message to our community from Terri, who may be gone. He's certainly not forgotten, and he is certainly delivering messages to share. So that's why I'm here tonight. So Terri loved our community as much as life itself. He never met a stranger, and he always found common ground with everyone and anyone. Terri didn't see problems. He saw projects. Big difference between problems and projects. And he never complained about anything unless he had a solution or a better alternative or an improvement. And he didn't see political parties. He saw neighbors, neighbors in need. No bridge was too far for Terri to cross because the highest good of our community meant everything to him. So as we make our way through difficult times of chaos, division, and uncertainty, may we please be more like Terri? Stepping up with hand extended to neighbors we have loved in good times and bad. Can we think of problems as projects? Can we think of divisions as opportunities to build bridges? And can we collectively put our hands and hearts together as a united community? Terri reminded me that our community was here before and will be here after the current turmoil of times has passed. Can we do Terri proud by each doing our part, providing hyper-local support to each other as we move through these unprecedented times together? Fly free, my dear one. Please watch over this community you love so dearly. We all love you and miss you ever so much. Thank you and blessings to everybody.
Thank you, Judy. Okay, if I say this wrong, I apologize. Sashiko from the Chumash Heritage National Marine Sanctuary. Sorry.
Hello. That's all right. My name is difficult to pronounce. It's Sachi Co. But that's okay. Sachi works just fine. I am here on behalf of Chumash Heritage National Marine Sanctuary. For those of you in this room who may not be familiar, it is a sanctuary that was just designated in November of 2024. And I'm really excited to say that regulations have taken effect. And part of the reason I'm here today is to let you all know about that fact and to announce that we are actively recruiting for seats on the Sanctuary Advisory Council. Before I get into that, I do want to provide just a little bit of background about the sanctuary. So it is not right offshore of Morro Bay, though there are potential plans to expand the sanctuary in the future. And if you are a member of our Advisory Council, you may be able to help provide input on that plan. But as it stands right now, the sanctuary starts just about one and a half miles south of the Diablo Canyon outflow, shoots out 60 miles offshore, and extends all the way down to Naples in Santa Barbara County. So it is actually the fourth-largest national marine sanctuary in the United States, right here in your backyard. This sanctuary provides protection to nationally significant natural and cultural historical resources, and will bring new opportunities for research, community engagement, education, and outreach activities. The sanctuary also recognizes that indigenous peoples have lived on the California Central Coast for over 10,000 years and honors the deep cultural and historical importance of this place to the region's indigenous peoples. So I am here today to ask that you all help to spread the word about the Sanctuary Advisory Council and the opportunity for community involvement in the management of this very special place that is right offshore. The Advisory Council is a body comprised of local community members and agency officials who will provide guidance on sanctuary management by providing input on issues and management actions, while council members also act as very important liaisons between sanctuary managers and their local communities. We are currently seeking applicants for 14 public seats. Those include quite a diversity of seats, ranging from indigenous cultural knowledge to commercial fishing, recreational fishing, tourism, offshore energy and technology, maritime, transportation, ports and harbors, et cetera. You can find more information on all of these seats on our Sanctuary Advisory Council website. And I have also left a, or I will leave today, a few resources that you can check out. And then I just also wanted to let you know, I have been in contact with your office and would like to extend an offer to provide more information to the council about your role on the Sanctuary Advisory Council as well. There is a local municipal seat that is available to fill. Thank you.
Thank you. And you said the information's available at the?
On the Chumash Heritage National Marine Sanctuary website. I've also emailed more resources to your office, as well as I'll leave some hard copies here today.
Thank you. Thank you for the information.
Thank you so much.
I have two speaker slips, and after that, public comment will be open for those of you who have not filled one out. First up is Jean Marie Colby, followed by Gary Johnson.
Good evening, everyone. Can you hear me? I'm Jean Marie Colby. I guess you can all see my slides. I'll, I'll just look over here. So I, I've been working a lot with the people from Moss Landing to share the information we gained over time. And they first made this website, this Facebook group public, and within days, there were thousands of members on it. And some of us were people who just were really curious, what's going to, what's it going to look like if we have a fire here? But there were many, many people reporting fires. So I'm here to talk about that and how it could affect San Luis Obispo County. And I want to thank you for doing all you can to protect our city from being subjected to this kind of fire. It was, it's a giant disaster up there, and they'll be recovering for years. So I support an outright ban on BES in the city of Morro Bay. Next slide. The citizens there took matters into their own hands and found a company who would help supervise collection of wipe samples on surfaces so that they could find out what heavy metals were spewed out by that fire. They found nickel, cobalt, and manganese in very high levels, and you can see the spikes right around Prunedale and Watsonville. Next slide. They trained 150 volunteers to collect the samples, and then they used the chain of custody techniques to preserve them for court and, and sent them off to be studied. And they show the distribution of the highest levels of cobalt are in the Prunedale-Watsonville area, eight miles away. But as you'll see from the upcoming map, which is, next slide, people are sick all the way up. Let's go to the next slide. Right, so people are sick all the way up to Felton and down to Carmel and out to Hollister. There's clusters. There are people further than that who've reported symptoms. But this map, we started, I helped them start this when people on there were reporting symptoms, and I asked, how far away are you? Where are you located? And they indicated their location, and we just started putting this on a map. And in a couple of weeks, there were 650 people reporting very unusual symptoms, you know, bleeding gums, nosebleeds, itchy eyes, burns, metallic taste, et cetera. I, I find this, this horrifying. And we all have to learn from this. I, I've spoken to some of them on the phone, and one of them could hardly breathe. She's had such bad respiratory problems. She and her husband are leading an effort there to, to become activists like we already have. Next slide. So a firefighter who does a lot of reporting on BES around the country and around the world took the Hunter Book studies, and there are links in those slides if you want to look at the study further. But he took that and created heat maps for each of the heavy metals. And I thought it was really interesting that the, the distribution patterns in these heat maps are, they mirror the, sorry. Okay, well, if you could just skim through the rest of the slides, I will move on. But I, I hope you will look at the slideshow yourselves and, and take that information with you. There's lots of good links on it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Gary Johnson? After that, public comments open for those, for items not on the agenda.
Beautiful day in Morro Bay. And thank you, Mayor, for going to DC. I know it took your family and all that, but it's so important to keep that sanctuary open and et cetera, and et cetera. I know. But anyway, I am so proud of our community, and I'm going to talk about our community. And so how much time? Okay, three minutes. Okay, so first I want to do a little introduction, because when I started this, take my hat off. So starting in 2000, I liked that what the lady said. I found this is not as a problem, a project. When I started looking into this lithium battery thing, I said, the guys that I was talking to at lunchtime, I said, why don't you look into it? That's good. That's a project. So I spent four years going into this. And I, everything that she said, I, at the beginning in 2000, I found out that cobalt, lithium, and all that other gradient is going to kill you. Cobalt will kill you. So anyway, I started talking to my peers, and I said, well, how are we, how are we going to counter this? Because when I found out this was coming in here, and when I'm finding out, the more I was reading, it was getting exciting. Project for me is like being at work. So when I talked to Barry Brannan and Corso, can't get her name out. Anyway, we spearheaded a group. And this group was composed of politicians, knew how to write all this stuff for A24, and we did everything we could. And there was part of that group, there was a few of us, well, more than a few that were, had my same background. And so we started doing the research and finally got this thing whole put, put together. And this is where the community comes in. We, we have our differences. Like Betty Winholt and I, we used to go around and around. But Betty and I are good friends now. But we, I called Betty about it, and I talked to Barry Brannan about it and some other people. And I'll be told, he says, you know, let's, let's just get together. Good. So quickly, well, I'm running out of time here. So anyway, we put it together. We went to our community, and guess what? The whole community behind me and all that, we told Sacramento, we're going to fight you. I think we're the only city in California that fought like this and won. We got A24 on there, and it won. And I just hope other communities throughout California and throughout USA, and the more research I'm doing now, those batteries are obsolete in a few years, obsolete. And there's all kinds of neat technology that I've been doing right now. Quantum community, computers is a big thing right now that is going to be changing the world. But anyway, I know I'm just jabbering on right now, though, but thanks again. And my condolences to Moss Landing. I knew that was going to happen. I told you. Anyway, I don't want to, bye.
Hello, my name is Barry Brannan. Want to thank the council for what you've done to put this
Want to thank the council for what you've done to put this emergency ordinance on. This sign was kind of a startup sign. When Vistra came to our city about two and a half years ago, we met them at the community center and invited them not to come in. So what I'd like to talk about tonight is the goal. Everybody says, "Well, the reason we want to put the batteries at the power plant is because there's this big switchyard there." And so we all understand the challenge and the rationale. But I took, my wife and I took a little drive on Sunday. We went up Old Creek Road. And I don't know if you've been up and see a nice little lake up there. That's where the water's pyramid lake. That's not the right name. But anyhow, y'all know where it is. But right next to it is a huge switchyard. So right here, just over the hill behind Cayucus, is a huge switchyard. So if I were an entrepreneur that wanted to put batteries somewhere, I'd like to be next to a switchyard. And so my roundabout way of saying is, we need to help the county, this county, write the same kind of moratorium for the county, because they got surprised when one was put in Napomo. I was at the Board of Supervisors meeting, and Jimmy Paulding was his area. He was just dumbfounded how bad this was. So they've got, and they can't stop it because it's got permits. But I'd like to have, if we possibly get the city, to send encouragement to the Board of Supervisors. I've already talked to Bruce Gibson. Our group has talked to him. We'd like to have the county put the same kind of moratorium on any future battery storage systems in the county, because we are here more in Morro Bay at very risk. Because if they put a battery storage thing up behind Cayucus, and we get the east wind, like northeast wind like we've had the other day, we'd be in real trouble. So I'd like to request, if we can, to think about, Mr. Singwald has written a beautiful story today, and if you haven't read his comments, and if we can make a recommendation to the County Board of Supervisors, I think it'd be, it'd our good health. Thank you.
On Sunday night, I went down to the docks and sat. I breezed with the shadows and rocked with the waves, stilling my mind and rejecting the will to do more than be. The rewards sought came quickly. Otters, two, four, six. 10 meters, five meters less. To hear them speak, to watch them hunt and play, a gift earned through respect and silent patience. I take note. I have here a few highlights from six months, my first six months of these meetings, in fact. And I've been a bit haggard this week, so I didn't have enough time to, you know, really form a clear picture of how I wanted to present these to you. However, there are a couple of things I should mention. Number one, interesting coincidence, Terry Simons actually features very prominently. He was a very interesting character, that's for sure. I think about half, half of my meetings notes, his name pops up. However, personally, recently, I have found myself more affected by another loss of, hmm, to some of us, a beloved character in our town, to others, far less so. And that would be Guitar Mike, aka Detroit. He, I loved him. I loved him a lot. He was great. We only talked a few times, and honestly, sometimes I'd be walking down the street, and people would, for whatever reason, think I was him. I don't know. I must walk like I'm drunk or something. But no memorial for him, not the same way. Far more obvious, far more on the streets, far more in your face, far more easily forgotten. But I don't forget, because I watch. Not only do I watch, I think, I listen, and I try to understand. And there have been a few things here and there that I have picked up on. Certain currents that reoccur, why one person is remembered and another forgotten, why priorities do not seem to be quite what they should be. As I was walking to watch the otters, I was thinking to myself once again, as I did in the last meeting, what is the ecological benefit to the bay of the dredging and, more specifically, a second shoreline? I know the dredging is a good thing, because the sand dollar populations explode and they're filter feeders. And then, of course, the answer came, more slips, more money. Who needs ecology when you can pay for it?
Anyone else for public comment on items not on the agenda?
Betty Winholz. "I came to show off my shirt partially for Terry Simon. He couldn't fit into it, but the message is the same." It says, "Morro Bay, season ticket holder. We'll see if we can get some made for others who attend regularly."
Thank you, Betty. Anyone else for public comment on items not on the agenda?
Good evening. I'm Charlie Klingman, with the co-founder of the Forever Stoked Art Collective in Morro Bay. And I just learned recently that there's, the Morro Elementary School is, apparently it's for sale. The school district is selling it. And I looked into it a little bit, learned that it's, used to belong to Morro Bay, and then became the school district. And I just think that if potentially Morro Bay could somehow acquire it, that could be good for the community as opposed to, I don't know what would happen if it sold, what it would turn into. But I know there's a Montessori school there. I'm a Montessori school graduate or whatever. I mean, I went my whole growing up, and I think it's a special place for people to, young people to learn. And there's one there. There's other buildings. I'm not sure all what they're being used for, but I feel like it could be a great resource for the community, potentially places for people to go other than work or home, you know, and not a bar. I don't know. There's just potentially something to look into there. So, thank you.
Hi, I'm Margaret Carmen. And I went to some of the thing on Saturday, and I just want to say about the people from Moss Landing. And I'm going to bring up what I brought up before, which is that 3,200 feet is not far enough from the city of Morro Bay to be able to put a BES plant in. And I hope it doesn't go in on Old Creek Road, because that's right next to our reservoir that has our water. And that really wouldn't be a good thing, to have all those heavy metals. And the scientists that was talking was saying how those heavy metals are released, and then when the fire hits them, they turn into all these oxides. And so you have all of these other minerals, more than just the first one that was released. So that when you do the testing, let's say, in the agricultural fields for one of the things they know is released, they're not testing for everything else. So it's just, it's bad technology. And I want to remind you that every time there's a fire, they say, "Well, we've got new technology, so that won't happen again." And I heard that about all four fires at Moss Landing. So I just agree with everybody else. Please, 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 we need more than just saying we don't want a BES plant inside the city limits. We don't need them in the county. There are just so many other ways to deal with energy. And I want to still say, I think a $500,000 remodel of this is too much. And I want to say thank you, guys, for all the meetings that you're going to and being present for us. I really, really appreciate it.
Anyone else for public comment on items not on the agenda? AGP, are there any raised hands?
Madam Mayor, there are no raised hands. Oh, one moment. We have Nick DeAngelis on, and you should be able to speak. Are you there, Nick? You can speak now. Try one more time, Nick. Hello, can you hear me?
We got you.
Okay, great. Madam Mayor, thank you for letting me have the time. So thank you for recognizing my hand. I wanted to draw a couple of things. I apologize for not being present, but I actually travel pretty extensively for work. So I'm a 2006 graduate of Morro Bay High School. Been in the town for a while, off and on, and have a lot of good roots there. But I wanted to draw just a couple of things, because I've been watching these meetings for around a year and a half. And I wanted to just draw back to just some simple documents. One of them, I want to reference, the policies and procedures of this board, this council board, the city council. You know, I don't know how many times this council is going to allow for comments that happen and occur by one of the speakers here often. And I want to draw back to 1.3.7.2.3. For any person that is making public comment that has no reference of business for any of the topics or any real relevance to anything happening in the city, I'm not really sure how long this city council, Madam Mayor, yourself are going to allow for comments that just have no relevance. It's the same, the same individual who yielded a knife inside of the city council meeting who's still being allowed to talk about items that have no relevance to the city is, quite frankly, a little bit crazy to me. And I want to just draw back to the documents that this group is responsible for executing on behalf of the people that live in the community. There was a speaker a few weeks ago who said he was in Salinas, California, who could not afford to live in the city. And the reasons of him getting on the call was to talk about Morro Bay Elementary, and yet we're still talking about Morro Bay Elementary with nothing really being done by this governing body to protect the community. And I've been watching these meetings for, you know, a year and a half, and I'm kind of calling out, like, you know, look, I'm reading the documents that this group is elected to deliver on for members of the community. I'm 36 years old. I bought a house a few years ago in Morro Bay, and luckily, I'm able to do that. But I have to travel often. I'm looking at the budget, which is to be discussed this year. I don't see any revenue gains. I walk around the community. I don't see our city staff providing any value. We've got shrubs all over the place. We've got broken curbs. We've got broken payment. And we're not talking about how we're driving revenue into the business, into the business that is the community, into the business that the places that I live, that my kids are growing up at. And quite frankly, like, I'm asking this governing body here to be a little bit more diligent in actually driving back commitments to the community. I see a lot of talking going on in these meetings. Quite frankly, I'm a little tired of a lack of action. So I just wanted to draw back, like, you know, with people yielding knives inside of community centers, I have a problem with that. I have a problem with that for my community. I have a problem.
Thank you.
People coming into these meetings.
Thank you.
And not really driving value. And we need action here.
Thank you. Thank you. AGP, are there any more raised hands in the queue?
Madam Mayor, there are no more raised hands in the queue.
Thank you. With that, I will close public comment, bring it back to council. Anybody have any questions or anything? No? Perfect. With that, we will move on, excuse me, to public comment for the consent agenda. Items on the consent agenda, 7A through 7D, public comment is open.
Good afternoon or evening again, Betty Winholz. I do want to speak to the libertine contract, and maybe not specifically, but I do think it's important to note that, and as I sent you an email, that the pipkin leases were something that have been coming up the last 20 to 30 years. There were 50-year leases, and as they came before councils, council was distressed that, "Oh, my gosh, a 50-year lease, all that money we've lost, because during that whole time period, we were not able to increase rent or do other things." And even if you put in a CPI, so 40 years is two generations, if you consider 20 years a generation. So I personally feel like 40 years is even too much. And so I would encourage you, if not now, that in the future, you really reel back the amount of time that you give to leases. And maybe 20 is appropriate, maybe 25, maybe one generation. But when you grant leases to people who are going to die before their lease is up, there's something bizarre about that. Thank you.
Anyone else for public comment on items on the consent agenda? AGP, are there any raised hands for the consent agenda?
Madam Mayor, there are no raised hands in the queue.
Thank you. Yes? Three minutes?
Three minutes.
On items on the consent agenda?
Will I get more time to speak when the item begins, or?
If it's on the agenda, you have to wait till that item, unless you can't stay.
All right.
So it's just one swipe at it.
All right. This is regarding Aquaphen. Leo Fender, the father of modern music, was an electrical engineer and entrepreneur who was inducted into the Rock and Roll Hall of Fame in 1992 by Keith Richards and the Rolling Stones, who said, "Thank you, God, for Leo Fender, who makes these instruments for us to play." Aquaphen was built by Leo Fender after he sold Fender guitar to CBS in 1965. I believe that Aquaphen is destined for the Rock and Roll Hall of Fame in Cleveland, Ohio. Aquaphen belongs there at the Rock and Roll Hall of Fame alongside the famous ZZ Top, 1933 Ford, eliminated from the radio, "Give me all your loving legs and the sharp dressed man." You can see on my website. Leo's wife once asked him why he was so obsessed with trying to perfect the amplifiers and electric guitars. Leo told her that he had a dream. He said Jesus told him that the world was going to be a very tough place. He told him that he'd sent angels to the earth. He called these angels musicians, and they would make the world a more bearable and bring joy. I had a profound spiritual experience that I do not have time to go in here today, but I believe will change the world. AI superintelligence is coming, and I believe God created me, the very person in the meeting, that the core AI-enabling technology was acquired by Cadence Design Systems and Nvidia to ensure that it enhances and not destroy humanity, including in Morro Bay. Also significantly, the first cross ever planted in the United States, I'm not sure if you all know, was planted in Morro Bay before the pilgrims landed at Plymouth Rock. I believe that Morro Bay is sitting on a gold mine, in fact, and I believe Aquaphen is at the center of it. I grew up in Toledo, Ohio. I developed a love for boating on the shores of the Mommy River in Lake Year with my father and grandfather. My dad's dream was to pilot his cabin cruiser from his home in Champlain, New York, around the Grand Loop, a nautical route from Champlain, New York to Champlain is a circular journey that covers approximately 6,000 miles of waterway. My father passed away from leukemia, January 18, 2016, six days after David Bowie died of liver cancer. I remember the headline on the day my father passed away was, "Planet Earth is Blue." David Bowie was inducted into the Rock and Roll Hall of Fame in 1996, and there's a video of a crowd singing lyrics to Bowie's famous song, "Space Odyssey," with the lyrics grown to control to Major Tom, "Major Tom, here I am floating in a tin can far above the moon, planet Earth is blue, and there's nothing I can do." The headline that day, "My Father Died," was all caps, bold, "Planet Earth is Blue." My father's name was Tom. He died in Houston at MD Anderson Hospital, where, of course, the Apollo missions Bowie was singing about were launched. I see a future where Aquaphen spends winters in Morro Bay and summers at the Rock and Roll Hall of Fame and travels through the Panama Canal, entertaining, bringing joy, educating tomorrow's engineers and raising millions of dollars through Dad's Dream.org, my website for cancer and leukemia research, with other vessels joining Aquaphen and Dad's Dream along the way. And I call that journey Rock to Rock, which you can see on my website, Aquaphen.com and Dad's Dream.org. I don't have enough time to talk about it, but I worked in Silicon Valley. Like I said, I was in a startup to develop the integral technology for Nvidia, to develop their AI systems. Set time up. I have a lot more to say, so hopefully it'll give me more time.
Anyone else for public comment on items on the consent agenda? Seeing none, I will close the consent.
Madam Mayor, there is one raised hand in Zoom now for that. Sorry.
Thank you. Thank you.
All right, you are unmuted and able to speak.
Can you hear me okay?
You're loud and clear.
Great. I want to just add some commentary about the item that's going to be talked about in regards to 9A, and I'm pretty sure it's 9B.
I'm sorry, this is for consent agenda items?
So not for the business items?
No, not until we get to those items.
There are no more raised hands in the queue, Mayor.
Thank you. With that, I will close public comment on the consent agenda and bring it back to council, 7A through 7D. Does anyone want to pull anything? To my left? No? To my right? No? I'll ask for a motion.
I'll move to approve items 7A to 7D.
A second that. Dooling seconds there. We'll give it to Councilmember Landrum. Thank you. Voice vote, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you. Motion carries. We'll give the next one to you, Councilmember Eccles. Okay, with that, we will move on to item 8A, which is going to be consider adoption of an urgency ordinance, number 670, extending urgency ordinance number 668, prohibiting application for grid scale battery energy systems facilities. And I will turn this over to our community development director, Mr. Singwald.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor and Council, Airline Singwald, your community development director. So this item is a request to consider an urgency ordinance extension for battery energy storage facilities, grid scale battery energy storage facilities. Just have a few slides this evening. I'm going to start off with some factual background for this item. So as we've discussed previously and as the council has heard over the last several years from the public in verbal and written testimony, grid scale battery projects do present potential public health and safety concerns, particularly related to fire and explosion and resulting impacts to the environment and economy. And those concerns were magnified by the recent fires and moss landing. And also, those concerns are magnified by the fact that the city does not currently have land use regulations for grid scale best projects. So on January 28th, the council adopted a 45-day urgency ordinance, effectively prohibiting best applications within the city limits. That is a 45-day urgency ordinance, meaning it is set to expire on March 14, 2025. Under state law, the urgency ordinance may be extended for a total of two years. And the ordinance before you this evening would extend the urgency ordinance for two years until January 28 of 2027. So on January 28th, when the council adopted the urgency ordinance, there were a few questions regarding what other jurisdictions are doing. So my team has done some research on that question that I wanted to take just a moment to present. So we identified four different jurisdictions in California that have adopted urgency ordinances over the past year. There may be additional jurisdictions, but these are the ones that are researched uncovered. So just real briefly, going down the list. So County of Solano, just over a year ago, adopted the first urgency ordinance that we were able to identify. County of Solano did receive a surge of applications for best facilities after AB 205 was adopted in 2022. And due to concerns about that surge of applications for best facilities, Solano adopted an urgency ordinance. City of Vacaville, which is located in the County of Solano, followed suit about a month and a half later, also adopting an urgency ordinance. So both of those jurisdictions, they're about a year into their urgency ordinance, and they have made more progress than others in determining what their long-term permanent regulatory framework will be for best facilities. And it's my understanding that those jurisdictions have developed a working group to develop land use regulations that would allow for best facilities in those jurisdictions, subject to special use standards and permit requirements and safety standards, such as residential buffers, to reduce potential health and safety impacts on adjacent land uses and within those communities. Going down to the bottom of the list, City of San Juan Capistrano, on April 2nd of last year, adopted an urgency ordinance. It is set to expire because it was just for one year, but I understand that San Juan Capistrano is considering another one-year extension in April of this year to have the full two-year length of the urgency ordinance. And City of San Juan Capistrano is still determining if they want to proceed with a permanent prohibition on best facilities or if they want to develop an ordinance similar to what County of Solano and City of Vacaville are working on to allow for best facilities subject to new land use regulations. So Orange County, and of course, Orange County is the county where San Juan Capistrano is located, just after the moss landing, battery plant fire adopted an urgency ordinance, so very recent. Coincidentally, the same date as City of Morro Bay's urgency ordinance, January 28, 2025. And of course, they're very early. They're still within their 45-day urgency ordinance period. And so we weren't able to identify any plan from Orange County on whether they want to have a permanent ordinance prohibiting best facilities or a permanent ordinance regulating the location and design and permit requirements for best facilities. There's a note on the bottom of the slide here regarding County of San Diego. So back in July, County of San Diego did consider an urgency ordinance and actually declined to adopt an urgency ordinance and instead directed staff to hire a consultant to study some of the safety concerns with best facilities and put together a list of policy recommendations that could potentially be incorporated into a permanent ordinance regulating best facilities for County of San Diego. So there were also questions last time regarding the AB 205 process with the State Energy Commission and the status of various applications pending with the state. And that's really important to this conversation because I think, as we all know, the urgency ordinance or a permanent ordinance would not prevent a battery plant company from making an application with the state and possibly the state approving an application overriding local city zoning requirements. So I think this is just important context for the council to be aware of when considering the urgency ordinance extension and also when beginning to contemplate what a permanent set of regulations might look like for best facilities. So the upshot here is there are currently eight applications on file with the State California Energy Commission under the Optin Certification Program. Of those eight applications, only one has been accepted for processing. The other seven are still under review, which means that 270-day time period for the CEC to adopt and act on those applications hasn't even started ticking. Those applicants are still going back and forth with the CEC, trying to get their application accepted for processing. And no applications have been approved for battery plants through the CEC process. And there are no applications that have been received for a battery plant within the coastal zone. So again, I think that's just important context when the council starts to think about different, you know, permanent ordinances and the different options that battery plant developers may have. So with that, staff recommends the council consider the attached written report that describes the measures taken to alleviate the conditions which led to the adoption of the urgency ordinance, that is a legal requirement of California Government Code, to adopt the urgency ordinance number 670, which would extend the best urgency ordinance to January 28, 2027. I do want to point out one minor technical typo in the ordinance. So technically, since we're bringing this extension to council early because the current 45-day urgency ordinance doesn't expire until March 14, and we're here on February 25. So instead of extending it for 22 months and 15 days, as the ordinance states, the council will actually be extending the urgency ordinance 23 months and three days. And that would provide a full two-year timeframe from the initial adoption date of January 28, 2025, until the expiration of January 28, 2027. So just making that comment for the record. And then three, provide further direction to staff to initiate public meetings regarding permanent best regulations. And that concludes staff's presentation. I'm available for questions.
Thank you, Mr. Singwald. Questions for staff to my left? No? To my right, questions?
I have one. So are you saying that if these other communities are doing the, basically, what we're attempting to do, could we use their research? And they're, you know, they're hiring, some of them are hiring consultants, and maybe we could kind of audit that and put it into our own words?
Yes. Absolutely. There's a lot of good information out there that we can borrow.
Which is helpful, right? And will save time and money for our staff.
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
And on that point, so as far as the kind of staff workload demand of developing the permanent ordinance, you know, to the extent that that's a consideration, of course, it's a lot easier and takes much less time to develop an ordinance that's just a permanent prohibition on the future best applications. An ordinance that regulates best facilities, that would require a substantial amount of work.
Any other questions?
On your comment there, Mr. Singwald, what kind of timeframe do you think it would require for the ordinance in terms of the regulatory aspect as opposed to prohibition?
So I anticipate that that would really kick off by like my, the third item on my list of recommendations is to get some direction from council. I'd imagine we would come back to council at some point over the next, I would say, two or three months to with some additional information and get direction on if council wants to consider that permanent prohibition on best applications or if the council is more interested in allowing for best facilities subject to, you know, conditional use permit requirement and, you know, X buffer from residential areas and other sensitive receptors. If we do get that direction from council to develop ordinance to allow for best facilities subject to regulations, you know, there'd be various options. We could establish a working group like other jurisdictions have to have, you know, community representatives and technical experts help advise the preparation of those standards. So it really, I think it really depends on the council direction. But we have two years to develop an ordinance, so we will have time constraints, assuming the urgency ordinance is extended this evening.
Thank you. If there's no further questions, I will open, this is a public hearing item, and I will open public comment. Any public comment? AGP, are there any raised hands in the queue?
Currently, I do not see any raised hands in the queue.
Thank you.
Again, Barry Brannan, I wanted to compliment the County Community Service Director, Mr. Singwald. He had another letter he wrote to the council. It was part of your correspondence. And I am absolutely thrilled with the quality of work that he's providing the council. And I hope you listen to his suggestions. And I think he's the proper leader for this. Thank you.
Anyone else? Thank you. With that, I will close public comment and bring it back to council. I totally agree with you, Mr. Brannan. Comments to my right? Comments to my left? Comments?
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. I just want to say to Mr. Singwald, I really appreciate the initial 10-day report that you presented and also this additional work that you did looking into other communities and their approach to this. It seems to me that, looking at, you know, the amount of time that some of them have proposed their urgency ordinances, it's relatively soon in the process, and it seems like they're still trying to figure out things themselves. So it's good to know that we're not the only ones. And then I do think that having, listening to the report, I think that having a certain element more of examination with regard to looking at where this goes in other communities and also having a sense of codifying how our community, what our communities' desires are with, in terms of the regulation of these projects, you know, that does kind of sit with me. And then also the idea of how we, you know, put that together with looking at SB 38 and the emergency planning of having something like this if someone were to ever exercise AB 205. So just some of my thoughts. I'm out there.
Thank you. I would ask council right now, then, are we comfortable with letting Mr. Singwald move forward with this and come back to us in the next few months with some suggestions for how to approach the ordinance long-term for whether we do a working group? Would that help to give you some timeframe to? I don't know how defined you want us to give you direction or if you want us to allow you a little leeway to come back with some recommendations?
Yeah, so there was a sense of urgency to come back in the 45-day time period to extend the urgency ordinance. And so we were able to put together as much research as possible within that short timeframe, but it would be helpful to be able to come back in, I would say, the next two to three months with more information and to help facilitate a discussion with the council to get that direction on which, you know, way we should take with the permanent regulations.
Thank you. Okay, so you have that information from us. Are we all in line with that?
Yes.
Everyone?
Can I have a comment?
Yes.
I feel like this is a really great step forward, and I feel like Morro Bay is going to be a leader in our county for this kind of an ordinance. And so be prepared. I'm sure that they'll be calling you, trying to find out what we've done.
Thank you. With that, I'm going to make a motion to adopt urgency ordinance number 670 entitled "An Urgency Ordinance of the City Council of the City of Morro Bay, California, Extending Urgency Ordinance Number 668, Imposing Prohibition on the Application, Acceptance, Approval, Commencement, Establishment, Operation, Relocation, or Expansion of Grid-Scale Battery Energy Storage Systems Within the City Limits During the Pending, Pendancy of the City's Review and Adoption of Regulations of Such Uses and Findings, and Finding the Action to Be Exempt from SEQA." And I'll ask for a second.
A second?
Thank you. And I'll ask for a voice, roll call vote, please.
Councilmember Eccles?
Yes.
Councilmember Landrum?
Yes.
Councilmember LaFaye?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem Edwards?
Yes.
And Mayor Wickson?
Yes.
Motion carries 5-0.
Thank you very much. Again, thank you, Mr. Singwald. Thank you to the community for all your participation in this. To be continued. We have two more items. We're going to be moving into fiscal year 24, 25, mid-year review report. Do you want to take a quick break now or do you want to wait till after that break? Five-minute break. Thank you.
Funds. These include the general fund, major Q and E, water, sewer, and harbor. The report shows that current year revenues and expenditures are on track. However, the long-term fiscal forecast suggests that your council will face challenging decisions in the years ahead as current revenue projections do not cover the full cost of ongoing capital needs. So this summary outlines the city's primary revenue sources, primarily derived from the general fund. Property tax accounts for 27% of all general fund revenues and is steadily increasing at approximately 4% per year. This aligns with the San Luis Obispo County estimates. This rise is entirely due to increasing assessed property values and is not necessarily linked to new development or an increase in inventory. Next, transient occupancy tax comprises 23% of general fund revenues, and this revenue source has plateaued since the boost in local tourism from the pandemic. However, Visit Morro Bay has reported noticeable growth in the second quarter of the fiscal year and is ramping up marketing efforts to attract more tourists this spring and summer. Sales tax makes up about 13% of the general fund revenues and is also experiencing a similar post-pandemic stabilization. Major expenditures discussed in this year's report include mutual aid activities, which are being budgeted entirely at mid-year, and this is a departure from previous years. This procedural change helps distinguish these reimbursements from other revenues, ensuring that they cover both current and future mutual aid expenditures. Personnel costs represent another significant expenditure group and are expected to rise in accordance with the approved three-year memorandums of understanding, with increases ranging from 5% to 8%, depending on the specific MOU. Personnel costs account for 67% of general fund expenditures and 79% of Q and E operating expenditures, respectively. A specific component of personnel costs is the city's unfunded accrued liability, or UAL, which is the city's portion of the California Public Employees Retirement System pension obligation that's not covered by CalPERS' current assets. So the city's UAL payment is determined by CalPERS and can fluctuate based on several factors, including their rate of return on investments, demographic changes within the pool, and other considerations. To help manage future UAL payments, the city has invested in a pension trust aiming at keeping those payments at or below $3.4 million citywide. Finally, the city has dedicated significant resources to capital projects over the past few years and will continue to face rising infrastructure and deferred maintenance costs. Current forecasts suggest that this will present a major challenge if existing revenue and expenditure trends continue. Moving right into the financial overview. Citywide, we have a total operating revenue budget of approximately $46.7 million and a total operating expenditure budget of $41.7 million. Both figures are excluding transfers. As of January 31st, actual revenues and expenditures are trending close to the expected 58%, given that we are seven months into the current fiscal year. On the capital side, the revenue budget stands at $19.8 million, primarily comprised of transfers from other funds, including the general fund, the Q and E fund, and enterprise operating funds. Total capital expenditures, which also account for the carryforward of unspent budgets from prior years, amounts to $51.9 million. Notably, over 30% of this budget is allocated to the water reclamation facility and the decommissioning of the wastewater treatment plant. Approximately $2.5 million has been spent on capital projects through January 31st. Looking at just the general fund, we've received 69% of the $19.7 million revenue budget and spent 66% of the $19.5 million expenditure budget. 100% of the $1.15 million allocated to capital projects has been transferred to the respective CIP funds. The amended budget assumed a total reduction in fund balance of approximately $950,000, while staff estimates are projecting a very small operating surplus. Fiscal year-end estimates include only those mid-year requests resulting from actual revenue or expenditure activity, such as mutual aid reimbursement and associated personnel costs. Drilling down into the general fund's key revenue sources. Revenues are trending high for this point in the fiscal year, but this is partly due to cost allocation plan transfers and insurance payments that occur at the start of the year and the fact that citywide interest revenue posts to the general fund as it's received and then is redistributed citywide at year-end. Most revenue categories are projected to meet budget estimates. Current services includes mutual aid reimbursement, which is why that estimate is looking a little high. This is a summary of general fund expenditures by type or object. Again, personnel estimates include mutual aid personnel costs, which have already posted. Estimates suggest several departments may have some salary savings. And after accounting for transfers and other one-time expenditures that post early in the year, the actual percentage of expenditure budget spent is about 58%, which is right on track for mid-year. I'm going to hand this one back to Finance Director Conrad as it is a personnel change that she can speak to.
Thank you very much. So this, I wanted to discuss this slide with you because we are requesting additional budget for personnel to bring the business license and TOT administration services back in-house. So we have two part-time positions in finance right now. Part-time positions are supposed to be temporary in nature, and these have been ongoing. So that's one issue that will be resolved by this proposal. And the other is performing those services in-house. So what I'm requesting here or proposing here is that both of those part-time positions are converted to full-time. The duties of one part-time would be consolidated, or both part-times would be consolidated into one of the part-time positions. So we keep all of those finance tasks going. And the other full-time position would then be 100% dedicated to the business license and TOT administration. It's my expectation or prediction that the administration of business license and TOT could be done in less than full-time eventually, once we get this new process all smoothed out. And I expect that the personnel identified would be voluntarily reducing to 32 hours a week.
Back into the fund numbers. Here, we're looking at the amended budget compared to the proposed mid-year budget. And the net impact of the recommended general fund budget amendments is an increase in revenues of approximately $319,000. But because the budget includes capital spending from fund balance, this effectively just reduces the drawdown of fund balance by that amount. Again, because the revenue increase is largely the result of mutual aid reimbursement, that portion of fund balance will be restricted to mutual aid-related expenditures in future years. I'm not planning to present much detail on the recommended amendments in this presentation, but we can certainly answer any questions about those requests at the end of the slides. Moving on to Q and E. As of January 31st, the city has received 41% of its $4.3 million revenue budget and spent 52% of its $3.4 million operating budget. Additionally, 100% of the Q and E funded, funding designated for capital projects has been transferred to the Capital Improvement Plan Fund. Revenue estimates are coming in higher than projected, but lower than actual figures, which, prior year, actual figures, which aligns with recent trends. But staff does believe that this post-pandemic decline in Q and E revenues is more of a normalizing pattern that will soon stabilize. In other words, Q and E collections gradually surged in the post-pandemic period and have been gradually decreasing. We don't anticipate to see that trend continue in the future. On the expenditure side, the city has spent 52% of its $3.4 million operating budget. And current estimates are tracking closely with budget, with slightly more optimistic projections for Q and E revenues and potential savings on the expenditure side. So here is a look at Q and E expenditures by department. Again, estimates are trending with budget, with only small exceptions. The non-departmental budget line shown here is for a public safety standards of cover study. The police overtime is trending a bit high, so it's pushing their percentage of budget spent up. Street maintenance has several large contracts that have been encumbered, but they've yet to begin paying those down, so that's why you see a low percent spent there. And then inter-fund transfers are all completed at the start of the year, so they are 100% spent. Now, a quick look at the three major enterprise funds. The amended budget for harbor operating assumed a small operating deficit. After adjusting revenues to be consistent with the past few years of actuals, which have been much higher than budget, it's looking like that fund will actually have an operating surplus of approximately half a million dollars. And this is made possible in part by Q and E absorbing $0.3 million of harbor operating costs, plus some salary savings due to the director recruitment this year. The water operating fund is trending very close to budget, with approximately $1.4 million to be spent from fund balance for capital projects. And sewer operating revenues are trending high due to storm damage reimbursements that have been received this fiscal year and high investment returns. Sewer has a large contingency budget for emergency repairs, which we did not model as fully expensed at the end of the year, which means the total drawdown of fund balance is projected to be less than the adopted budget assumed. Okay. Each year, we take the draft mid-year report to the Citizens Finance Advisory Committee for their review and comment. And there was only one minor amendment requested of the Q and E fund, which is their primary concern. It's a $10,000 increase in the part-time pay, which funds the Harbor Patrol Reserve Program. CFAC did not recommend approving this requested amendment. They recommended funding the request from either the Harbor Operating Fund or using projected savings from the lifeguard part-time pay account also in Q and E. As far as budget development is concerned, we asked them this at all of the major budget milestones in the year to make sure that they're looking ahead as they're also looking back, and they recommended going back to basics for the Q and E fund. They would like to see more funding for police, fire, pavement, storm drains, and youth and parks expenditures. Now to the 10-year fiscal forecasts. Staff has returned to a 10-year forecast model this year, thanks to feedback from the community and from CFAC. This extended forecast is hard to accurately project for the out-years, but it does present a bigger picture, which is helpful in planning for the future. Assumptions in the current forecast models have been adjusted slightly from prior year versions, and this was done to align more closely with actual revenue and expenditure trends seen in recent years. For current service revenues and other operations and maintenance expenditures, we're assuming about a 3% CPI adjustment across the forecast. Sales tax is projected to be 2% increases in the near term and then 3% for the long term. Property tax, we're keeping at the 4% per Slow County estimates. The harbor estimates, this is probably the biggest update, so we've adjusted these to reflect those recent actuals on their revenue side, which is much higher than previous models, and then a 2% to 3% rate to match inflation. And personnel increases 6% to 8% in the next two years, and then is only a modest COLA is assumed. And then pension liability costs can range from just 1% for normal pension costs to as much as 3% in the near term for UAL. These 10-year forecasts tell a similar story to the ones that we brought before. The city's ongoing revenues are projected to remain just above ongoing expenditures, but it's a slim margin. The city's ability to fund capital projects from its general fund operating surplus is not keeping up with actual capital needs. So to explore this issue, we're going to prevent a few scenarios this year. In recent years, we've only shown the forecast using what we consider to be recommended capital spending levels, which were clearly infeasible. So this year, we're also showing you a forecast that complies with your current 33% reserve requirement, plus a forecast showing what the city can accomplish with a reduced 20% reserve requirement. These scenarios represent limited approaches to the city's conundrum, which is either spending less on capital or lowering reserves. Other opportunities can and should be evaluated, which is why staff is also recommending that we develop a long-term financial plan to ensure that your council has a broad range of options to choose from. Starting with the okay news. This chart summarizes the combined general fund and Q and E operating budget. The result is a narrow margin between those ongoing operating revenues and ongoing expenditures, potentially resulting in a gradual buildup of fund balance. Once those three-year MOU increases lapse, you really start to see that recovery. No capital expenditures or one-time transfers are included in this chart. This chart shows the impact of attempting to budget the minimum recommended capital spending. What you're looking at here is all expenditures, operating transfers, and capital in magenta. The dashed dotted line represents your total revenues, which largely fall below total expenditures. And then this deficit is shown in the lavender bars. The green bars represent the available fund balance, which lowers in response to recurring deficit years. This scenario is illustrative only. We could not actually spend at these levels because, as those negative green bars show, we don't have the available cash to do so. But the major highlight here is that we're looking at $18.9 million over 10 years of capital spending. Whereas in this version, I've adjusted everything to comply with the 33% reserve policy. It's the same chart, but it shows what we can actually afford to spend. And you'll see that capital spending does result in budget deficit in a few years, but the available fund balance always remains positive. And under this scenario, the city can afford approximately $11.7 million, as opposed to that $18.9 million in the prior scenario. If we were to lower the reserve threshold to 20%, this version shows the impact, which obviously frees up additional cash and allows you to spend a total of $15.1 million over 10 years. Lastly, we have the Harbor Operating Fund, which I'm including here because there was an amendment requested. That's why you're not seeing the other enterprise funds. Absent unapproved multi-year CIP to pull from, the finance staff just assumed a minimum of $400,000 per year for a total 10-year capital investment of $4 million, which is likely insufficient and slowly lowers available fund balance over time. And that is all I have for you. We are open for your questions.
Thank you very much, both of you, Melissa and Emily and your whole team, for this presentation. Questions to my right?
One question, Emily. I understand that you're bringing business licenses and TOT collections in-house. Thank you. What savings will we incur from the firm that we have doing it right now? I mean, do they charge us a percentage or a flat monthly fee? Just as a comparison to add the two employees. And then the second question on that, you mentioned that they would voluntarily go back down to 32 hours. Is that something that you know both of them will be, or just one position? Those are the two questions on that.
I'll take the easy question first. It would be the one position that would voluntarily reduce to 32 hours per week. And I, my gut is that that's feasible for these duties. But a lot depends on the processes working as I think they're going to work. The first question, without the contract in front of me, I'm not going to be able to quote every single, every single dollar in there, but there's a little bit of both. So for business license renewals, HGL earns the processing fee that we're charged for new applications or renewals, which is a different fee, but that's straight out of our master fee schedule. For compliance services, where they seek business license holders whose licenses have lapsed, any revenue gained from there is a 25% cut. And there's a 35% for any that were in... Oh, I'm really relying on my memory here. Similar thing, they're chasing after business licenses, or they, I think they put in an application but didn't pay for their, pay their fee, so any revenue is recovered from that objective is a 35%.
Some savings from doing this, too, that might offset the personnel cost.
There's a potential for that, but that hinges on how we conduct annual audits. So I'm looking at about, so prior audits cost between $40,000 and $60,000 prior to HGL services. Evidence shows the city didn't really make much on that, the net was not very high. I'm talking a few hundred dollars in one audit year. So if we could reduce that and find another way to perform the audits, there is the potential that we could save, it would cost us less to do it in-house than HGL contract.
I guess I'll piggyback on Councilmember LeFay's question. Sort of along the same lines. I'm curious, you mentioned that there's no, no funding for part-time pay. No, wait, sorry. Part-time is supposed to be shorter. Why, why is that? Like, why are you supposed to, like, you can't, it's not allowed to have part-time employees, or?
It's allowed. So there are two different things we might be thinking of. So what we, what I have in my office are two part-time temporary employees. That means they're not permanent part-time. They're temporary part-time or hourly. And so they don't earn the same level of benefits, and I don't have all the HR law behind.
Okay, thank you for clarifying that. Yeah, and that's all I have for right now.
Councilmember Nichols.
I don't have any questions, but I'll save my comments for later. Thanks.
A lot of people get us confused in town, by the way. Happens all the time. I guess my question, it was mentioned in the report, and I think we've talked about this, Ms. Conrad, is when do you anticipate the risk-based analysis being done? I think that's kind of something that we're all sitting on with regard to that reserve and lowering it and having that discussion, so.
At this point, I would estimate we could do it in July or August. Because we're in this high-budget season with a very small budget staff, it's not realistic that we would be able to complete that before this budget cycle.
I tell you, page 22 is very sobering. Great word to use, by the way, Ms. Green. I think, I think that's good for now. Thank you.
Thank you. With that, I will open public comment on this item. Can you hang on till we come back? Public comment is open.
Betty Winholz, as a business owner in Morro Bay who has had trouble for the last couple of years getting my license, I thank you for bringing that back in-house.
Anyone else for public comment on this item? AGP, are there any raised hands in the queue for this item? AGP?
Try again, Nick.
Yeah. Can you hear me okay?
You're loud and clear.
Okay, great. Thank you. Madam Mayor, you council members, again, as I started in my, in my initial comment, what, the report that was just presented, outstanding report. For someone who's balanced budgets, thanks to Morro Bay High School and their economy class, and has excelled in business, I, I encourage this group to think a little bit more broadly than starting with general comments that's about reducing people's hours to 32 hours. Just a reminder, again, I bought a home a few years ago for $800,000 on Main Street. Not too long ago, I was sitting in front of a capital project investment, which didn't allow anybody to walk on a curb because we were doing pavement work. That pavement work is not complete. We're talking about lowering people's hours in an environment that costs a tremendous amount of money to live in. Morro Bay is not cheap. And we're talking about reducing people's hours as a first question, when we should be talking about growing the top line of the city. It should be, this should be extremely serious. And I want to draw back one of the items that was discussed, back to the basics, which encouraged more youth activations. About a year ago, somebody from the community came in and said, "How are we going to expand parks and rec to have more World Series, World Series events, more softball events, draw more tourism in?" And we're still sitting here talking now about recommendations from an entity that we should have been acting upon a year and a half ago. And, and I would challenge, if we think only about cutting costs, we're going to end up right in the environment where we are now with broken infrastructure. The roads are not done. I would challenge the capital project investment, dollar amounts. We're going to need more money in order to stay ahead of the evolution. You have tourists come in, that is more depreciation on the city's infrastructure, and we are not talking about how to improve top-line revenues. The city has to survive a lot longer than 10 years, and we immediately start with questions about how to cut people's hours to 32 hours in an environment that costs an alarming amount of money to live in. So like, again, drawing us back to what, what the community is built on, I'm not feeling like we are really focused on, on improving the ability for tourism to, to be recurring and to have a good place to live and for the community to be vibrant and for the town to be vibrant, because we're always talking about cutting costs. If we would have listened to recommendations a year, a year and a half ago to really get into capital expenditures and growth, we would not be in this predicament. I'm calling out here that this is an opportunity for this council to start to make some moves here, because I'm not getting the vibes. And I, you know, we really need to think about how the community is going to continue to develop and grow.
Thank you. Anyone else for public comment on this item?
There are no more raised hands in the queue.
Thank you. Anyone else? With that, I will close public comment and bring it back to council for comments. You had another question? Councilmember Lynn?
Yeah, I just, I wanted to ask about the auditing in the future with eliminating the outsourcing. Is there any kind of on-the-horizon AI kind of thing that would do, take care of that? I mean, it seems like that's, would be a really good use for that, you know?
I don't, I don't know the answer to that question. I would say that having the human touch on this sensitive item is actually pretty valuable. So I could, I could look into whether AI is available.
Well, my, I mean, maybe I'm misunderstanding what the auditing is. Is it, you're looking for business licenses that aren't?
Pardon me. I'm talking about transient occupancy.
Oh, oh, yeah. Oh, okay.
I'll go to comments.
Emily. Melissa, great job. Seriously. This gives us a tool to use to make decisions. And I wasn't trying to be nitpicky, Nick. I was just asking a question. So, but I think we are in fairly good shape, and this also gives us an insight to, as a council, to look at things to do to increase revenue, and I think we're doing that. In the last month, we've increased revenue in the next couple of years. In the last month, we've increased revenue in the next couple of years, probably about $350,000 to $400,000. So congratulations here, City Council, we are trying to increase revenue.
Thank you. Councilmember LeFay. Councilmember Landrum comments? Councilmember Echols?
Yeah, just a few comments. I'll echo the sentiment from Councilmember LeFay. Thank you, Emily and Melissa, great report, very informative, and it gives us good information that we can use to strategize and plan for moving forward. One of the public speakers mentioned the business licenses. I, up until two years ago, I had a business license here at a retail shop for about 13 years, and, yeah, when HDL took over, the service went down. So I know that there will be some savings realized from, from the contracts that we had with HDL. Maybe it won't offset the entire cost of personnel. However, the increase in the level of service to our businesses and the time savings that our businesses will recognize, as well as just frankly, some of the morale of the businesses knowing that they've got partners inside the city, that in the long run will increase revenues and, and is, is worth something. That's, that's worth quite a bet. I thank you also for acknowledging that our sales tax revenues, including the Q and E revenues, are normalizing after an extraordinary surge after the pandemic. Basically, we got about a year's, almost a year's worth of, of sales tax front-loaded right after that pandemic, and that's when, of course, you couldn't move down on the Embarcadero because there were so many people coming to town. So things are normalizing. I appreciate, I reached out to Chair Peck, he had a chart that was quite alarming that showed, I think, a six-year decline in sales tax revenues. That's unrealistic. HDL's estimate is 2% to 3% per year, the state is, is forecasting about 3% per year. So that is an area that we can increase. So I've talked a lot about economic vitality and beautification of our town. We are a tourist destination, we're a visitor destination. Our product is this town, and we have our built environment and our natural environment, and we need to do everything we can to enhance both our built and natural environment. So when we talk about beautifying the, the streets, having wonderful storefronts, working closely, the city working closely with our business community, in the long run, that means increased revenues to the city, as well as, of course, a better economic environment. Let's see, I think I had one more thing. Yeah, and, and I'll, I'll just mention, too, that we are bringing on additional sources of revenue. You, you modified your long-range forecast for harbor lease revenues that will be coming in. I'll acknowledge that the council had a 5-0 vote for a major project down at the end of the Embarcadero. The Planning Commission just had a 5-0 vote to approve a, a project. When I served on the Chamber of Commerce Government Affairs Committee, we talked a lot about the culture, what, what's the culture of the city and what's the culture of the business environment? We talked about a culture of yes, as opposed to a culture of no. I believe this council sitting before you right now is fostering and encouraging a culture of yes, and that is starting at the top and working its way down through the Planning Commission and through all other departments in the city. So I applaud the leadership that's being displayed up here at the DAAS. I'm excited that we will continue to create a culture of yes as we move forward, and at the end of the day, that top line, and actually, the, the speaker that called in was adamant about it, and, and being a small business person, I have to agree with him, yes, we can nitpick about expenses all day long, but if we drive that top-line revenue growth, a lot of problems becomes much smaller. Thank you again for the wonderful report, appreciate it.
Mayor Protim Edwards.
Yeah, thank you for, thank you for that, Councilmember Echols. I, I absolutely concur with what you said. I think starting from yes is a lot better than starting from a no, and I appreciate that, that sentiment. I do want to say thank you to Ms. Green and Ms. Conrad and the staff for this really in-depth, detailed, but also, I think, very honest report. I, I think this is one of the most honest and sobering, love that word, it's going to stick with me, that I've seen in a while. And I think that it was mentioned a few times with regard to staff pursuant, developing a long-term financial plan. I absolutely think that is key, it's critical. I think having an openness to work with partners like Chamber and Visit Morro Bay is also going to be key moving forward. I noticed a point made in the, in the report with regard to this optimism with the increase in TOT. I'm not sure what that's based on, that you received from Visit Morro Bay, but I'm very intrigued to know more about that. I think that CFAC continuing with their subcommittee that's looking at revenue opportunities and looking at how we can leverage the things that we have asset-wise, whatever that is, I think that all of this goes into what is going to make us more healthy and sustainable into the future. So I think this is a continued conversation that ironically is going to segue into this next item. I think prioritization of capital projects is going to intricately play into this conversation. I, I see a tandem effort that's going to hopefully come forward between finance and, and public works. I'm, I'm sure that, I know that you guys collaborate often, but I think having more visibility to the community and more conversation that way, getting really real about what's going on here, especially looking at those numbers going into 2029, is, is critical. And so I just want to say how much I appreciate what you did tonight, and I'm looking forward to where this conversation goes. And I'm, to the community member that phoned in, this is on my mind all the time, wakes, wakes me up in the middle of the night trying to figure out the answer to these things. But much like my colleague said, I, I believe very much in this council, so hopefully we will get some solutions. Thank you.
Thank you. I will concur with all the comments up here that have been shared in regards to our positioning on this item. I appreciate, as a business owner, the business licensing, as was shared by Ms. Winholz and others coming back in-house, recognizing a savings is always great, but streamlining, streamlining the service and providing customer service is what we're in business to do, and so sometimes the trade-out is worth it in the end. I appreciate it. Again, we had the opportunity to sit through this at the CFAC meeting, so it was twice for us to absorb this and, and continue this conversation as we move into budgets. And with that, if there's no further comments, I will make a motion to approve item 9A and ask for a second.
Yes.
And all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you very much to your team, Ms. Conrad. Thank you, Melissa. With that, we'll move on to 9B, review of capital project prioritization, and I will turn it over to Mr. Qualick and his team.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, members of the City Council and the Morro Bay community. I am very pleased to bring a presentation about the review of our capital projects prioritization. I invite the council to look at this as a sort of study session. There's quite a lot of content in here. We are not making any specific recommendation to the council to take any action, but this is certainly an opportunity for the City Council to ask questions about projects. Maybe there's ones that you want to pull to another date to get some more in-depth information on. We're going to be presenting some high-level information today, but there is a lot, so let's get right to it. We'll do our best to keep it quick and upbeat. So what is this presentation? What this is? It's a high-level perspective on projects versus staff capacity. That's a tension that we deal with in the Public Works Department. It's an outline of our critical projects. It's potentially a starting point for a more formal capital improvement plan, and there's some benefits to the city having such a plan, not every city does. And also, it's a potential to, for the City Council to have some discussion on what projects the council believes are important, what they believe aren't important, and what we might want to, again, bring back to take a closer look on. What this presentation is not, it is not a comprehensive list of public works, workload or tasks. This is really just the capital projects that we work on. It is not a request for council to reorder the ranking, and it is not necessarily an in, excuse me, an in-depth discussion on the capital projects, though we are happy to go into some detail with the information that, that we have today. So what, what's going on here? Well, the city owns a sewer system, a water system, a road system, a storm drain system, a park system, a harbor, and many facilities across town. And so our view is that capital projects and authorizing capital projects are investments into these systems, and these investments impact the quality of life. Much like Councilmember Echols mentioned earlier, the beautification of the city matters, it matters if the roads look new and the sidewalks are clean. And so there is some stewardship over these capital assets that we own, and staff has a role with that, advisory boards have a role with that, of course, the City Council has a role with this, as, as does the community. So what is the typical lifestyle of a capital project? Now, every capital project is different, but just broadly speaking, there are a few phases. The first phase is project authorization or, excuse me, initial budgeting. So typically, staff would come to the City Council during budget season and say, hey, we've identified a need in the community, we're requesting this much money, this is why, and once the City Council votes in that budget, staff now has authorization to work on that project. Sometimes projects come up as, as urgent issues. One just came up last week that we'll discuss a little bit later, and staff may already just start working on it, maybe not necessarily spending money on it, but trying to understand what the issue is, looking for a solution, and then coming back to the City Council at a later time to get that authorization to, to actually to perform work out there. And then after that authorization, there is a conceptual design phase, that's often when we're starting to look for grant funding. We have to understand what it is we want to implement before we go into environmental. And then after environmental, typically we'll do 100% plans, specs and estimates. That is what we take to go out to bid, and we go through construction, and then we approve finalization of the project or completion of the project, and, and the project is done. And just some notes on capital work, unless urgent, staff work, our, our work starts after the City Council authorization and budget. So staff does not typically start working on projects if the council has not authorized. Again, some exceptions are when there's an urgent or emergency work. Projects can be multi-year. Money is not always spent in the budgeted fiscal year. I think there's maybe a misconception out there that if something is scheduled for this fiscal year, I'm sorry, it's budgeted for this fiscal year, that means that it's expected that the work gets done that fiscal year. That's just not always the case. Typically, for paving, for example, if it's authorized June, and then the money is there in July, staff spends some time putting together plans and specs and estimates, and then we take it out to bid, and the project for paving is done maybe the next summer, and it's already outside of the fiscal year. And so that's, that's a pretty normal thing, and also, when we have backlogs of projects, we, we're not always able to do the work in the fiscal year for which it's, it's allocated. But again, the nature of capital projects is that the money is not there just for the one year, but it's, it's over several years sometimes. In that way, they can be investments. And finally, council may pull back on projects. If, if staff has funding allocated for a project, and maybe a previous council wished that project to come to fruition, and a new council comes in, projects can be pulled back. So to talk a bit about our capacity, we have roughly 1.25 FTEs working on 37 or so capital projects. We've talked about having over 50 capital projects. Some have been completed, we've combined a lot of them for, for the purposes of this presentation, we've also eliminated a couple. And so we've now come to a number of 37, but some of those projects are now quite large. And we typically are seeing, on average, about six projects done per year. Again, that changes, it's just like if you're reading a novel, I could read six 100-page novels or one 600-page novel, so it just depends on the projects we're working on and on the year. Some years we get more done, some we get less done. This is not a typical workload for 1.25 people. This is, this is pretty extreme, and there are some consequence to this, namely, first, that non-project management staff are sometimes managing projects. So I'm, I'm sometimes managing projects. Our, our Utilities Division manager, Damaris Hansen here, is managing some capital projects, and that takes away from our ability to, to do our jobs, but also, it means that we have competing priorities. We're, we're in firefighting mode a lot, because whatever's on fire is what we need to jump to, and so we're, we're losing focus because we are switching tasks so often, and, and that has an effect on the work output. Further, it means that we are advancing multiple projects, but all of them are being advanced incrementally, and we're, we're seeing slow progress because of that. And of course, if we had additional staff, we would be able to accelerate projects, and that can be achieved in, in a number of ways, which, you know, it's up to the council if we want to talk about. I'll, I'll be working with the city manager to see if we want to take something as a budget request later this fiscal year. There are questions that come up when we discuss staff capacity about volunteers' roles, and, you know, I truly believe that volunteers have a role in the, in the betterment and the upkeep of the community. Managing capital projects is not one of those roles. I mean, that takes specific knowledge, understanding of public contract code, understanding of the labor code, prevailing wage, and it, it is not recommended that volunteers manage capital projects. Volunteers don't necessarily need to commit to completing work. Volunteers can start work and then walk away in, in the middle of the job. So just want to put that out there, because that does come up sometimes as, as an option, that is not one that we would recommend. I've never seen a city do that. So we're going to jump into the projects list. I'd like to introduce our crew here. We have city engineer Cindy Cecil, Damaris Hansen, who's the Utilities Division manager, and Austin Della, who's our senior civil engineer. Both Cindy and Austin are PEs, and Cindy is also an SE. We have a bunch of projects here, we're going to try to go through them quickly, and we're going to bounce back and forth. They're done in order of the ranking, and the ranking was described a little bit in the staff report, we won't go into that now, but we are going to jump into it unless there's any initial questions.
I have one question.
You say you have 1.25 FTEs. I, I see two individuals, Austin and Cindy, so I don't understand.
Yeah, thank you for the question, excuse me, thank you for the question, Councilmember LeFay. So we, we look at how much of their time is actually allocated towards capital projects. So not, Austin's time is not all allocated to capital projects, there's other tasks that are going on, and the same with the other staff. Any other questions?
Yes. I was wondering, so six projects a year, is that, is that due to the sewer? Like, taking all the, you know, all, all the work bandwidth? Is that, is that, or is it, or, or are you saying that 1.25 FTEs equals six projects a year in general? That's the number that you're looking at? So if we have 38 projects, that, in order to complete that, we would need over six full-time employ, six, seven, seven full-time employees? No, because it's 1.25. Yeah, but it's 1.25.
Well, thank you for the question, Councilmember Landrum. With current staffing and assuming no new projects, then, yeah, it would take about six or seven years to complete the projects that we have now. Any new staff added would be more than, so right now, there's a lot of this firefighting work that we get involved in, like, there's a, a request to look into something, or we have to jump because someone emailed. Like, there's a request to look into something, or we have to jump because someone emailed us and is really upset about something on their street, and we are very responsive, and we investigate those things, and that takes time. If we added more staff, the new staff wouldn't necessarily be doing that, because that's already being handled with existing staff. So actually, if we, let's say, added a, you know, two- or three-year position, we could have that individual solely on capital project work, whereas we can't, because we're doing other things besides capital work.
Okay, thank you. I was just trying to get some idea of what one person, the workload that they can handle, and it's hard to, based on what you've just described, it's hard to understand that. But thank you.
Yeah, Mr. Qualik, I'd like to ask this general question before we actually get into the projects, because it might, I don't know if it'll help others, but it might help me. You know, when I'm looking at the list of criteria, you know, I'm just wondering, was that, you know, from status on the way down to prevention and maintenance, was that the order that you made the ranking?
Thank you for the question, Councilmember Edwards. Yes, roughly. I mean, this was more of an art than a science. We actually had a whole formula developed initially where we ranked everything, and what we found was that when we input data into the formula, the ranking wasn't really reflecting what we saw as actual priorities. And so, then we were trying to adjust the formula to get the priorities right. And at that point, it's like, well, we're just gaming the formula anyway. Why not just, why don't we list what we think are the priorities? Some of these can, you know, are ties, or they can be interchangeable, but this is a rough idea of what our priorities are in public works.
Yeah, I appreciate that, because, you know, as an elected official, and I'm looking at the priority, you know, what you listed, it's, it might be different in terms of order of how maybe I would view it, as opposed to an engineer, which I'm obviously not one. So I really appreciate hearing that process from you. Thank you.
Director Qualik, I've got sort of a higher elevation question, just in general, and we actually spoke about this several months ago, but I think it would be good for everyone to hear. It's relative to employees and consultants, and the cost of both. And there's the idea that, well, if we're spending hundreds of thousands of dollars on consultants or PMs, project managers, could some of that money be carved out? And I'll just use a hypothetical number. We're spending $600,000 on project managers and/or consultants. Could we carve out 125 of that, or 150 with benefits, to be directed toward one FTE? And then, over time, the staff would actually become more robust, or at a level where we could potentially use fewer outside consultants? Does that, so talk about the pros and the cons of that, please.
Sure. Thank you for the question, Councilmember Edwards, and maybe some members of my team might have some thoughts on that. I think that is an idea that, at the face of it, makes sense, but the, what we see is that if we hire contract engineers, they are doing work, and sometimes very specialized work, that we would not be able to do in-house. Or they're able to scale up capacity for three weeks on a certain project, where city staff cannot. And so, they are performing work that either we may not be able to do, or if we did do, there wouldn't necessarily be a savings. So are there opportunities to save money on contract engineers? Probably. I don't think it would be anywhere near 125,000 a year. As an example, we may have to hire a traffic engineer. We don't have a traffic engineer on staff. So could staff perform that at some risk to their engineer's license, which they probably wouldn't want to do? We've hired CMs for kind of high-intensity, high-volume workload projects, like the paving project we have right now. Would we be able to staff up two engineers for six months? Probably not. Or if we could, it probably wouldn't be a savings to, compared to what we're paying for the contract CM. You know, I think another idea of how to fund another position would be to charge the hours, much like a consultant, to charge the staff hours directly to the capital projects, rather than to just operating Q and E and general fund. And that would allow us to not hit those funds. It would make the capital projects a bit more expensive, and this is common practice in some cities, it's just not one that we have here. But in terms of reducing contract engineers, we wouldn't necessarily see any savings made available. It would slow down work, and it may not correspondingly increase our ability to produce our own work. Okay, so we're going to go through it. And Mayor, if I may ask, would you prefer that Council asks questions during the presentation, or wait until the end?
I think we'll, huh? I think we'll try and get through the presentation as quick as we can, and then to questions.
Okay. Thank you for that.
Okay, thank you. I'll take the first one. So first, we have Recycled Water Project and the Moro Basin Well-Filled Rehab. So the Recycled Water Project is the third phase of the city's Wharf project, and it's a required component of our WFI and SRF funding. This project includes installing injection wells, equipping, and associated piping to get the advanced treated water to these wells. After that water is injected, it will need to be extracted by the existing extraction wells. These wells are roughly 60-plus years old, and unfortunately, really showing their age. So the well-filled rehab will address some vulnerabilities in the Moro well field, and rehabilitate six active wells, and including adding one additional well. The well rehab and the new extraction well are funded by the Water Fund, not by the Wharf Project. The water, recycled water project is handled by the Wharf Project, and they're just put together for some cost-saving measures, and the anticipated completion date is fall of 2026.
You're all familiar, sometimes painfully, with the pavement management project that's going on currently. And we had a presentation by the engineer who prepared the plans for the project and did the research, and he determined that we would need approximately 4.5 million per year to maintain the current pavement index, which had gone, has gone down over the last few years. The current project that is ongoing, we will have spent approximately 4 million when that's completed. So we stabilized for this year with that 4 million, more or less. And we will be requesting funds in '25, '26 for the next project, pavement project, which we will do the design portions in 2025, and the construction in 2026, assuming we get funding.
Fetsal AV is one that you're very familiar with. Will be coming back to Council in April with some design alternatives. We do have $519,000 in PEG and general fund for AV and building improvements. And so, we currently have encumbered around $290,000, so the rest of that money would be available for building improvements. We hope to complete the AV piece in July of this year.
Number four, wastewater treatment plant decommissioning, one of our CDP requirements with the Wharf program. The reason that it needs to be done is because of the new Wharf Construction Water Resource Center. As of right now, the RFP for design of the decommissioning is out. The proposals for that design will be due next Thursday, March 6. Currently, it'll be funded by the Wharf project. The timeline right now shows engineer will be selected in March of this year, design complete, October of this year, construction complete, by our funding deadline, September of 2026.
FEMA, the FEMA project is for the 2023, 2024 storm damage. All of the projects have been submitted and been through the initial FEMA review stages. There, we recently had, I don't remember the exact number, I think, seven projects that were approved for payment. Funds are in flux. They have not gotten to us at this point, but they're expected eventually. There are about six projects that are still in the final stages of review, and that's why it's still in, as a project, because it will still require time to respond to questions. And there, my experience so far has been there are typically a lot of questions from the reviewers, even after, in this case, I think it's the third phase of review on FEMA's part.
Number six, the Brackish Water Reverse Osmosis Consolidated Project. This is one of the projects where we have actually consolidated four separate CIPs for the intent of this presentation. The first one being the BWRO and well-filled backup power. This was a project developed when the city started considering the vulnerability of our water supply. If there was an extended state water shutdown, which there has been, and a power outage, we would have no way of producing potable water. For current status, the backup power design for the BWRO is actually complete. We brought on the design engineer that designed the electrical portion of Pump Station A, and we were able to determine that Pump Station A backup generator that was installed with the conveyance program, that we could actually tie into that backup generator. And so, that design is complete as far as the well-filled backup. We are running into lead time issues on equipment when finding out we needed a new transfer switch, so we're still waiting six to 12 months on that lead time. This project is not currently funded, and we're still looking at a 12-month timeline for completion. The reskin, re-roof of the BWRO is another one of the projects that was consolidated. Basically, the BWRO houses a lot of critical electrical equipment and controls for our water production. This building leaks quite a bit. We have panels on the exterior that are rusted completely through, same with the roof. The current status of this project is we have a contract with Newton Construction that we will be bringing to Council for approval. Right now, this is partially funded. Council approved $200,000 for this work. The work will cost $300,000, and we're looking at a six-month completion from now. The RO piping, tank modifications, and building improvements and piping modifications, those are two separate capital projects that are approved and funded by Council. Basically, they will address some of the outdated piping and process equipment of the BWRO. It'll improve process efficiencies. We have regulatory requirements to change our discharge location of our brine of our RO. Some of this work has already been completed with conveyance, so a lot of the work left to be done is on-site of the BWRO. It is currently funded, and right now, we have no current timeline for it.
Excuse me, the revetment seawall project, as most of you know, we recently received the assessment of the condition of the seawalls and revetments, and it's no surprise they're quite old and in need of repair. The assessment addresses not only the condition, but also evaluates the urgency of the repairs, and so estimated each revetment and seawall with a separate cost, so that we can tell as, for instance, there's three, there's two seawalls and one revetment that are considered critical and urgent to be repaired, and that's about 3.8 million. They're very rough estimates, because this does not include any design, so this is the estimates of the person who did the assessment. And those three projects, it's stated in the report that they need to be done as soon as possible, at max, probably two years. There has been failure in each of those three projects. There's additional, obviously, there's another 12 areas that need to be addressed, but that aren't as urgent. Just to show a little bit of what they found. The storm drain analysis, we have received grant funding that will cover 75% of the estimated cost, with the city required to have a 25% match. This will analyze the Moro Creek watershed, where the extreme flood damage occurred during the 2023 storms. There's a, could you go one more? We currently have approximately 140,000 in the budget already that we can use to, we have, in this kind of grant, we have to pay consultants out of pocket, and then we're reimbursed for funds that have been paid. It's a three-year grant, so it's, needs to be completed by October of 2027. Those are just some pictures that you probably all remember the real thing, of the flooding that occurred in 2023, just to show the urgency of this project. And just to be clear, this is analysis and high-level recommendations for mitigation, and does not include the design or construction of the mitigation. And then, the RO floodproofing, the building, as my understanding, and I wasn't involved at that time, so, Damaris and Austin may want to kick in if I miss or misspeak on this one. But there, we've also received grant funding to address damage that did occur impacting the reverse osmosis facility. There was a well that flooded and a pump that was damaged, which shut down the operation of the RO facility, so we want to mitigate that happening in the future. And again, we have funding for 75%, and a match, a city match of 25% of that. And one more slide. We have money in the budget for the upfront costs that will be reimbursed for, at least in this first year, and same deadline, October 2027.
And just want to point out that between items eight and nine, we got one and a quarter million dollars in grant funding from FEMA, not for damages, but for future mitigation projects. So that's a semi-competitive grant that we were successful at, actually, two. We have Coleman Park. The bathroom was removed in 2021, as everyone knows. There's limited ADA accessibility there. City held some community meetings. We run a very, we won a very competitive grant and got $600,000. We haven't spent it yet. Additional grant money may be needed, depending on the scope. If we continue with the scope that was authorized by a prior City Council, then we would need more grant funding. So the timeline on the project will depend on scope, and this is one where the City Council may want to direct us to have another look at that scope. So want to call that one out.
The Quintanamine project was The Quintonamine project was initiated, as I understand it, by residents, both, I believe there's, was, is one resident that's visually impaired that, and then there's other residents. It's a difficult intersection, as everyone knows. They're currently, the, there isn't an ADA compliant curb ramp, well, the curb ramp is not compliant, I should say, needs to be rebuilt. We have grant funding, and it's Slocog funding, and we've had it now for, I think, three years, so they're getting anxious for us to address that project. The roundabout environmental is well underway. There have been delays. It was initially hoped that the report would be completed this summer. It's now expected to be completed in February of next year. We did consult with Caltrans on whether that would still allow us to, the project to be taken in by Caltrans under their shop and CAPM program that they've offered to take over the project once the environmental is completed, and they confirm that it does meet their, still work in with their project. This, the environmental dock preparation is fully funded, and, Greg, can you advance one? Sorry. And so we expect to, if, with council approval, if council approval occurs in February of 2026, we expect to turn over to Caltrans spring of 2026.
The Nutmeg Pressure Zone Consolidated Project is intended to improve fire flow and storage in the nutmeg zone. The deficiency in fire flow and storage, I put in parentheses, at full build-out were highlighted in the 2018 One Water Plan. Currently, we are working with Cannon to, to look at alternatives to building the proposed new nutmeg tank. We believe that we have, we've come up with a solution that will cut costs dramatically and also improve other aspects of our city's water infrastructure while solving the same problem that the, that the tank would solve. Right now, it's currently funded, and cost estimates and a phasing plan for the alternatives should be complete in the next two months. And the idea would be that design for the first phase of this project would begin middle of this year, and construction for that phase early of next year.
Okay, number 14, we have the brine line capacity issue. Unfortunately, during the 2023 floods, it was discovered that the brine line or the outfall line could not reach its design capacity. The city's been working with the design engineer on the brine line to determine these issues. It was determined that air has been trapped in the line, and so it's reducing the capacity for that, to hold the water in there. So several air release valves would need to be installed to allow this air to escape from the pipe. Currently, the city is in negotiations with the design engineer of the pipeline and the installation contractor to resolve these issues. Any cost associated with this project could be funded by the overall WRF budget, to the extent that the city's actually liable for any of these costs. The timeline of this is dependent upon the negotiations we have with them.
Excuse me, the Tydlands Boat Ramp, you're probably all familiar with. The deterioration of the ramp has gotten to the point where it can no longer be rehabilitated. The concrete is, we've lost a lot of reinforcing there, out cutting rebar that pops up out of the deteriorated concrete on a pretty regular basis, so we're at the point where the only choice is to replace that ramp. There maybe can do some stopgaps with some map covers or something to make it a little safer until we're able to replace that. The preliminary plans were done a couple of years ago, before my time. There, they have also a preliminary cost estimate associated with that. There's been some change in understanding of the scope from the state for ADA compliance, so we will need to rework the plans and have final plans done for the project. We're looking into grant funding opportunities. We've received two grants in the past that we were unable to use for a variety of reasons. My understanding is partly lack of staff to administer the grants. These are, this is, there's a little hard to take a picture of it, but some of the metal that's now exposed because the concrete's gone, so people are walking and driving on that.
The outfall inspection and cleaning would be a complete evaluation of our ocean outfall, including sediment removal. The ocean outfall is a very critical component of our wastewater system, and a 2010 inspection report indicated that there were structure and associated cathodic protection issues with our outfall. The 2010 inspection, inspection suggested that further investigation and valuation is needed. Currently, Corolla is finalizing a, an outfall management plan that was required by our CDP. Currently, there's $600,000 budgeted in the sewer capital fund for this assessment, and there is no timeline.
The city has $250,000 for playground equipment. It's now considered general fund. We recovered 250,000 from ARPA, and so that money has been absorbed in that way. It's freed up 250,000 for this project. There's deferred maintenance on playgrounds all across town. Now that I'm a father of a toddler, I can especially appreciate that, and they also pose some potential liabilities. We're doing a lot of patchwork on, on the facilities. The city staff has identified Lila Kaiser Park and City Park as most in need of replacement, and the RPC got a chance to review that and some themes in November, just a few months ago, and they, they concurred with city staff on, on, on those items, and there's a six-to-12 month timeline. Sometimes there can be some lead time issues with these components, and staff is currently working on it. This is what's envisioned for Lila Kaiser Park, and that was based on some comments and recommendations from the RPC. The Whale Rock Crossing, there is a dispute between the city of Morro Bay and the city of San Luis Obispo. Morro Bay constructed a 12-inch con, and it's 12 inches thick, concrete slab, including also several utility lines and a driveway over the city of Slow's Whale Rock Pipeline at the newer sewer treatment plant, and that was done as part of the WRF project somewhere in 2019, 2020. The city of Slow feels that we've precluded their access and violated their easement, and so we're in negotiations right now on cost owed by city of Morro Bay and any other city responsibilities to mitigate this issue. Currently, there's no timeline determined.
The North T Pier, I'm not, I should have looked, and I didn't, what, when it was built, but it's in dire need of repairs. It was assessed by a consultant, and we have the report. They did similar to what they done, have done for the revetment and seawalls. They prioritized the need for repairs, so we potentially could do the most urgent in front of the less urgent repairs. There's always some lack of efficiency in doing it that way, but if that's what we have to do, then that's what we'll do. There are, there is a list of repairs that are considered urgent, including a number of piles that are completely gone at the water line, and there's some significant electrical issues due to deterioration of the structure that's supporting the electrical.
And I'll just add that, as city council knows, the city did receive 1.5 million dollars towards this project. As a federal earmark, the city has 10 years from the date of award to spend that money, and the city's seeking additional funds so we can get a good project going. Some pictures.
Number 20, the Morro Creek pedestrian, pedestrian bridge. Specifically, the areas adjacent to the bridge need armoring and cleanup. So the areas around the bridge were damaged from the 2023 storms and swell, large swells and high tides that we had last year. The current status is we are working with the coastal commission on our path forward to address some of these issues, as well as we have a contract engineer actually coming into town this week, addressing a scour critical issue on the Moro, the Main Street Morro Creek Bridge, and while they're out here, we have it in their scope to take a look at the pedestrian bridge, the Morro Creek pedestrian bridge, to look at the abutment, the armoring that is existing, and to come up with some ideas on how we can improve that. Currently, there is no funding for the cleanup and the armoring upstream of the bridge, and there is no timeline. Here are some pictures of, the one on the left would be the, the upstream of the, of the bridge, which, from an engineer's perspective, it's much more serious. It's starting to erode the bank, which, right now, we, you know, are about probably 150 feet upstream of the bridge, but it is endangering that abutment and overall that, the bridge itself. The picture on the right shows the bike terminus that the erosion has basically undermined, and half of, half of that infrastructure is, has fallen into the creek. And yeah, we, we can't just go in and remove it without coastal permission.
Madam Mayor, I've got a point of information. So are we planning on going through all 37?
Defer that to the public works director?
Yes, that was the concept.
Thank you. So, so I have a, a request. I don't know if it's the, of council. I don't know if it's the most efficient use of our time. I'm, I'm feeling, and I appreciate staff and the additional staff being here, but I'm feeling that I'm not equipped to evaluate any priority at all on these. The slide deck, I think, has valuable information, but this is the first time we're seeing the slide deck, and I would, I would think that this should be maybe narrowed down, or perhaps kicked back to PWEB so that they can consider and narrow that list, but I just feel entirely ill-equipped to, to really dig into this tonight.
I think that, based on the presentation and the number of projects, that we probably will not be making any recommendations tonight, that we're just going to be literally receiving this information. And, and I think this is the first time that the slides been presented with it, right? It was not at PWEB. Mr. Colick?
Thank you for the question, Mayor. We did bring this to PWEB in April of 2024 at a joint meeting with CFAC. It looked a little different. There's been some changes since that meeting, but yes, it did go to PWEB and CFAC.
Okay, thank you. Yeah, maybe if we can just have a more condensed version to get through, because there's still 16 more, allow a little time. Thank you. Thank you, Councilmember.
Thank you.
Sure, and we're, we're happy to follow council direction, so is the desire to move past the projects and just go into the questions, or?
We won't know the rest of the projects, it'll be hard to go to, perhaps we can just get a more abbreviated version? Thank you.
Yeah, how about if I just personally do a very high-level?
Perfect, okay, and then we can ask questions to staff that are here.
Sure, so this trashcan replacement project is a beautification project. We've mostly spent the money, the materials are on their way, and some of the trashcans are already being manufactured. Those are the old cans. This is what the new ones will look like. Here's an example in Anchor Park. The Ridgeway Tank Rehab, that's one of our tanks in our water system. We don't have funding or a timeline for this one yet, but it is something we'll have to get to in the next couple of years. There's some examples of issues with the Ridgeway Tank, and this is storing our, our drinking water. The Safe Diversion Box is a holdover issue that, from the, the construction of the sewer treatment plant, it is something that we got $123,000 back from FPV on, but this project still needs to be done and put out to bid potentially. The Lila Kaiser Well Storm Drain, I'm not that familiar with this one. Is there pictures? Here it is.
And that's not the actual Lila Kaiser storm drain, because it's still buried. It's an example of the, another that's the same age as the Lila Kaiser. It's, the reason it's on here and, or more urgent than some of the others is because it's in the vicinity where new wells are about to be constructed, and we don't want the new wells contaminated by a failing storm drain.
We have the pedestrian bridge at Delmar Park. The deck needs replacement. We'll be putting in a request this budget season to get some money for that project to get it started. The Monty Young restroom is in terrible shape. We'll likely request money for that in a future budget for replacement of that or renovation. The Bike Path has serious drainage issues every time it rains. Huge puddle in the middle of it. We might propose putting a culvert under a portion of that. Again, future project, no budget, no timeline. Tascadero Road Parking Drainage, this is across the street from the old wastewater treatment plant, where people park to go out onto the beach. There's some drainage issues there. No budget, no timeline yet. The Embarcadero Ped Dock Ramp, Cindy, do you want to speak to this one quickly? I don't have the background.
Sure. It's, it's the leased docks, it's the, it's a ramp that leads to docks that are leased, and it's, the steepness of the, at low tide, the ramp is so steep that they're, they end up with stuff going into the ocean, so it's been requested that we reconfigure that. We haven't figured out how we're going to do that yet.
Canay is outside the city, and there's been a request for us to maintain a bridge that helps out a few residents of, of the county unincorporated areas. We may have an option to sell the bridge and the well that we have out there in Shore Creek as a, as a resolution of this issue, which is not really a priority for us at this time to work on, but that's some pictures of the bridge. It's in pretty bad shape. We've closed the, the bridge to pedestrian traffic, but it's possible some people are still using it. We have two projects regarding Beach Comer Sewer. We have the main project, which is fully designed, except we can't start it until we figure out what we're going to do with the backyard sub mains, whether we're going to keep them in the backyard and tear up everyone's backyard in the beach tract, or if we're going to put them in the street, which would come at some expense to the city and also potentially to the homeowners there. So that, that's one we'll have to untangle when, when we, you know, get through some of the other priority projects we're working on. Tascadero Main Sewer, also a project that we've been working on for some time. We, we have put some effort into it. We'd like to get it done before the roundabout, since it potentially could affect construction there. If we do have a roundabout put in, we don't want to then open it up again soon after. This and the Beach Comer projects address I and I issues, which are inflow and infiltration into our sewer system, which is a problem. I won't go into it now, and then capacity upgrades for, for these lines. One water plan update, we'll be recommending in the next budget season to rescind this project. We should do it, but no one really has time to work on it right now, and it's not very urgent, in my opinion. Cloisters Pond Cleanout is something that comes up a lot. It's part of our storm drain system. There's silt in the pond, reeds are there. Eventually, it's going to become a problem for drainage during storms. It's not quite there yet. Right now, it's an aesthetic issue. We talked about beautification, this, you know, this could look a lot better. There is 190,000 in the Cloisters Fund balance, but we haven't budgeted it to this project at this time. No timeline determined. Again, we don't have really time to work on it. The Pickleball Courts Expansion, again, great idea. We don't currently have a cost estimate. There's no budget or timeline determined. I understand there's a user group that's putting some work into it. I would just caution that in the past, user groups have put work into a project, and then when we get it, we have to redo. into a project, and then when we get it, we have to redo, redo some of it. So, and some of the issues there is then, when, when that situation occurs, again, all with good intention, it then becomes a priority for us. It's, it starts jumping the list, because now we have to review something that a user group has advanced. So it, it kind of gets complicated. And finally, the Active Transportation Plan is one that we'll be recommending to rescind as well. A good project. It would help us pursue grant opportunities. Without it, we don't have access to some grants, but we don't have time to work on it. A new one that came up last week was the Bay Shore Bluffs Stairs. It's not in the packet. We did a site visit last week. The footing there is undermined, not critical, but it, it will get worse. No project funding or timeline. I'll just close with, there, there are many of these that are lying out there that, you know, any week, there's, you know, some, some other thing is undermined. We have a new sinkhole, and then it becomes the priority of the week or the month. So we're just sort of spinning wheels in this cycle. I think we've made our point, and I do appreciate your patience as you've been watching this presentation. This is the last slide. Do you have any questions? Yes, and, and what we can do is attach it, I think, Dana, to the, yep.
Thank, thank you. It's a lot. And thank you to all four of you being here. I appreciate that, and I know we have lots of questions. So I will start.
Yeah, I've got a question. And yeah, please take my comments prior in the spirit that they were delivered. I, I do appreciate staff being here, and I'm not discounting the magnitude of this list. I just want to go about it the most efficient way possible. So a higher elevation question, Director Qualick. Several of these projects that you mentioned are funded. We've, and this, this may involve our finance director as well. We've funded, but we probably don't have plans to get to in the next 12 to 36 months, let's say. We know that our pavement management plan is, is a high priority item, yet we're scrambling to find the dollars to finance that. Does it make sense from a high elevation level, and, and I'm new, I've only been here a couple of months, so this is a question for, for staff, what would the mechanics be of reallocating those funds? Can we do that through the budget process and move funds that were prior allocated toward other projects that we have a high likelihood, a likelihood that is not going to be expended over the next, say, 36 months and reallocate that over to something such as the pavement management plan or any other super high priority items that, that you help us identify?
Thank you for the question, Councilmember Echols. It's a good idea, and it's one that I would recommend. We don't necessarily bring for discussion at budget time, but we, we bring as a separate item prior, so that when we do this large budget process, it, it doesn't take over. It's, it already includes the council's recommendations. That said, I, I, you know, like, we're recommending dropping ATP. All right, that's, that's 67 grand of, of discretionary funds. There, there's a couple others. My sense is they're not going to be huge numbers that we can transfer. Certainly, though, there will be some opportunities to move money around, and we, we can bring that to the council.
Thank you.
Deep breath.
Well, one of the questions, again, and this is probably not the time.
I'm over here.
Oh, I'm sorry.
It's okay, Bill. Got the floor. You know, I'm, I'm a really optimistic person, and I just want so badly for staff to be able to achieve these outcomes, and it just overwhelms me seeing this tonight. And I feel so much for all of you, because I know you want to achieve these things. And so I guess my, my question, Mr. Qualick, is how do we, I mean, how do you go about unraveling that task? I mean, I, I see we're making a priority list here, but do, I mean, honestly, is it, is it, at what point, percentage of a project, you know, you've got allocated, it's kind of on down the pipeline, and, and work's been done, design's been done. I mean, what point do you say no point of return? You know?
Thank you for the question, Councilmember Edwards. Do you mean, at what point do we give up on a project? Or, or, or do you mean something else?
Well, it, it, it could honestly be where you say, you know, we're just not going to make the deadlines that we've either made for ourselves, that council has given you, that a grant funding has made for you. I, I'm seeing multiple, I mean, I marked, there's multiple that are one or two 2025, a couple 2026. I mean, I'm just looking at this going, if, if grant funding was a key component, you know, and of course, I'm always, as I said earlier, I'm looking from the perspective of risk management and safety and health of this community. So it's a little bit different. I, I know that you guys spend so much time going after grant money to, to even make these projects happen, to complete. So I guess, I guess at what point do you, I'm just trying to get an understanding, is at what point do you say, you know what, team, we're, we're just not going to get here?
Thank you for the question.
Being real about it, Mr. Qualick.
Yeah, no, I, I appreciate it. We, I don't think we've really had that, except for a couple of projects that, that we discussed. We also, when we took this to PWEB and to CFAC, we recommended eliminating some projects, and they did not take a vote on any of them, but based on feedback we received during the meeting, we did take out some projects last year. There are some projects that maybe are just not necessary at this time. They would be good to do. They might save the city money in the long run, but we just can't, we just don't have the capacity to do them. But that said, our, our staff here in Public Works are very passionate about the, the work they put in and, and the public service that they provide, and it means a lot for us to make sure that the city looks good, that it's safe, that, you know, water and sewer services are delivered effectively, and that we're responsive to, to residents and to the council and PWEB, et cetera. And so that's sort of a last resort for us. But, you know, certainly, if the council wishes based on this list or a future list that we provide to remove projects, we can.
Yeah, I, I mean, I mean this from the bottom of my heart. I just, it's just, you know, I want you all to be successful, and, and i.e. that makes us successful. But, you know, I'm also wondering, you know, do you think about clustering some of projects together? And not just for purposes of going out to bid, but just in general, when you're looking at kind of strategizing?
Thank you for the question. Any opportunity we can to, to consolidate, we do, because that creates efficiencies where we can get more done. So there's some examples of that in the presentation tonight.
I have a, hang on a second. Hang on a second, Councilmember LaFaye. I have a real quick question before I shift to the other end, since I usually go last. I feel like with this list, and I appreciate knocking a few of those out, and, and staff capacity, what it's always an issue, no matter what. But would it help us if we were to separate out, I feel like we're competing, water sewer projects that are coming from the Enterprise Fund versus capital improvement projects, the paving and the other things that are coming from General Fund, and the time allocations that are available from staff, and the list that's 37 projects or 36 projects long, 37, you added one, took one out. Would it be easier for us, Public Works, CFAC, I mean, PWEB, CFAC, council, to be able to address this if we could have some division in it where we don't see these as competing projects, per se? Do you understand what I'm trying to ask?
Yes, thank you for the question, Mayor. And actually, the city manager and I had a thoughtful conversation about this earlier today, and there's something to it. And I would say it depends. If the, if the goal is to separate the projects for kind of ease of grasping it all, it's funny, because we, we live in this world every day, and for us, this is our new normal. But looking at a list of 37 projects, many of which are critical, it, it's kind of hard to grasp what is a priority. And we honestly face that same challenge. But if we're just, if we're just splitting up the list for ease of digestibility, it wouldn't really help us, because it's still the same staff that's working on it. So like, for example, with, with, with Austin's time, you know, he has limited time in his day, and he, he's either going to work on Project A, B, C, D, all the way down to J, and he has to make decisions about what he's going to work on. If, if we have a list of priorities that are separate, it, it's still, it doesn't really do anything, because it's just the same person doing it. And I, I think what's happened at our city, unfortunately, is that because these projects have accumulated over time, because of the decades of deferred maintenance, we are having to make those decisions. Is it more important to work on the reverse osmosis system or, or paving? You know, is it more important to put in a bocce ball court or work on a sewer line? And again, we want to be responsive to, to all parties. If what you're suggesting is that we split up the lists so that different people can work on them, then that, that could make sense. So in, in other words, if there was a different structure, then it could make sense.
I think not just that, but there are different funding sources. When we talk about funding that is or isn't available and not funded, we know that the water sewer is an enterprise fund and has separate funding. So for me, just that one simple caveat does make some separation of what's feasible and what's not. The, the capacity of staff is a whole different issue. But as far as funding, which is attached to that same mechanism, is there enough staff resource? Is there funding? I think that, for me, looking at this helps to kind of, you know, make that determination, where I'm not having to, to choose capital projects where one is funded and one isn't.
I see. I, I understand. Yes, and I think that's information that we could provide more clearly in the future. We still have some work to do in cleaning up some old accounting for some of these projects. I, I would just note that many of the projects that we have in the top 15 or 20 have funding. Not, not all of them do, but many of them do. So I, I do appreciate the feedback.
Thank you. Councilmember LaFaye?
I'm good.
No. Come on.
Madam Mayor?
Yes.
Can I follow up with your question?
Yes.
Since, and we'll write. Yeah, super quick. And thank you, because it, it does kind of tag along to the mayor's. Director Qualick, as you were having that conversation, I was thinking a matrix, some types of, of matrix, and I don't know if you already have this, but the time required to complete the projects, whether it's funded or unfunded, urgency on the particular project, ranked by whether or not it's a risk to public health and safety, and then lastly, would be adequate staffing. And you all are much smarter than I am with this kind of thing, so you could probably put a couple more columns out there. And then I'm thinking we could come up with some type of objective ranking, and then we could apply the subjective ranking on top of that.
I, I appreciate the feedback. This is actually what we did for the PWEB and the CFAC last year, and it, it, I mean, we could do that. We could hire a consultant to do it. That's a joke. But we, it, it was just taking a lot of time, and we weren't really getting results that were meaningful. I'm sure it could be done. I, I don't, I don't know that it would be worth the squeeze, so to speak, but I appreciate the feedback. We can kick it around on our team.
I think the one thing that, again, with the, you can do six projects a year. We have a certain amount of money. We sit down and we discuss those six projects that we want to do with that amount of money and its story. I mean, we look at the health and safety aspect, I, I think, because some of these things, and you know what's critical and what's not critical. I mean, if a water main breaks, that's a health and safety issue. And I think that the, the sewer and the water should be top priority. I hate to say it, even as much as I love Coleman Park and the Tidlins Boat Lawn Ramp, I mean, sewer and, and water are, if something happens to that, that's going to really be a critical mess. Those should be top priority for the city of Morro Bay.
Councilmember Landrum, questions?
Questions? Okay, I have a question about the Brine Line. First of all, who are the design engineers? And why would there, I mean, ever, it sounds like it's unclear whether there would be a cost to the city, but I would hope that there would never be a cost to the city, because we've, I thought we've already established that we're not responsible. So there's a question, I have a question about that. And then also, kind of, along the same lines, the Safe Project. I would think that this would be covered by Corolla's oversight, and it wouldn't require staff's oversight, because that was another thing that was funded through the, our agreements with our settlements, or whatever they're called, with the contractors that we had for the sewer. And if we don't get, I mean, I would think we should use Corolla to do that, because if we have a certain amount of money towards that, and if we don't do it relatively soon, that money's going to become worthless, and then we'll have to actually spend money on it. So those are...
Thank you for the question, Councilmember Landrum. I'd like to address that. So the Brine Line, you're absolutely right. City is not at fault at all on that. And we paid for a certain capacity, and we didn't see it during the storm, and we're very upset about it. And the design engineers responsible for that are Water Works engineers. And so we've been working with them. They have actually dove in and done their own analysis, which we appreciate, and come up with some solutions. The question is who's going to pay for it? And we're in a position now where is it the design engineer's fault or the contractor's fault who installed everything? And there's arguments on both sides. It, it may wind up in a lawsuit, and the city's in an interesting position, because we're, we want to move it along. And we, this might go the legal route. I, I don't believe we should pay for any of it. We may have to pay attorney's fees, you know, that would come out of the WRF budget. But this is, this is one of those items where there's still some work to be done to get the parties to admit that they're responsible.
Were, were we not holding some kind of money back for this instance? Like, because I don't understand how we even ended, ended this project if this hadn't been addressed?
Thank you for the question. So we have held back $200,000 of retention from Anvil Contractors. It may be determined that they're not the party responsible, and so that doesn't really help us. Or maybe they're partially responsible, and they pay for some portion of the project. So the rest of the money, we'd look to recover from Water Works engineers. And so that would either be potentially through a claim against them, or a lawsuit, or maybe we can bring them to the table and just get them to pay for it.
Okay, I think. And there's no Corolla responsibility with that?
That would be a very, and I would, I would defer to the interim city attorney, though he may not have the background on this, but it, it would be a very difficult thing to prove, to our understanding, to hold the, the PM responsible for that.
Okay. And then, well, this is just like a quick question. How much time, staff time, the 1.25 staff time, is required for the trashcans?
That's a good question. That, that one's a little bit of an outlier, and, because currently, we have Carlos Mendoza working on that, and he's not included in the 1.25. It's considered a capital project, because our practice is that anything over $50,000 is a, is a capital project. So that, that is not included in the 1.25.
Okay, thanks. And so you mentioned that we could modify or, or eliminate projects, and at what point do we do that? What do we talk about that? Because one that jumps out at me to review is the roundabout, and that one is holding a large amount of General Fund money, too. So I, I just, and it sounds like there's been a delay with, with the, you know, the consultant that we've hired, so maybe we're less into it than we should be, which maybe is a good thing. And I'm just wondering what, at what point we would have that conversation?
Thank you for the question, Councilmember Landrum. My take on it is, City Council has discretion on whether or not we proceed with the project. My recommendation would be that we would bring this as an, as a separate item for review at a later date, because there is, there's background here, and there's, you know, there's a, a lot of moving parts, so that we can provide council with full information to, to come to an informed decision.
Well, I also say that because this, that project is conditioning some of the other projects in here, or, or requiring that they push forward. And if you didn't have that as a project, it would eliminate those things, you know, as being priority. So...
Which projects are you referring to?
There was Sunset, Sunset and Main, and Aril, yeah, Aril and Main.
So I'll comment that that project is a Fire Flow project that we, we... So I'll comment that that project is a fire flow project that we feel is a relatively high priority. And, you know, I, just a short story. When I was living in the city of LA, I saw them do, anyway, I won't go into the details, but there was a sequencing thing where they did one thing, or they should have done it later. I think they removed a tree, but then they cemented over the sidewalk, but then they had to go back and do it all over again. We try to avoid those kinds of situations. So if we know that we potentially have a roundabout going in, we'd like to get work done that involves a roundabout before that. Ideally, those projects are done anyway before construction of the roundabout, which we project to take place sometime in maybe late 2027 or early 2028. And we've got two and a half years until that, that happens anyway.
So you're saying those projects are the top 12?
I'd have to look at the list, but my comment would be that I wouldn't say that they're conditioned on the roundabout, just that we want to make sure sequencing is done in a way that's efficient and effective. We wouldn't want to build new roadway and then rip it up again.
Right. But if you weren't doing the roadway, you wouldn't have the, that wouldn't be, you know, pressuring you to do anything immediately, you know? You could prioritize maybe the things that, like the water sewer things, you know, the beach combber thing, or, you know, something else that seems more, I don't know. And then my, I guess, final comment or question is, well, the storm drain analysis and those grants, have they been guaranteed? Like, I wonder about a lot of the grants and with what you hear in the news regarding funding and stuff like that. Are any of these grant situations subject to, or potentially subject to, not being fulfilled?
Thank you for the question. The storm drain analysis, no, that's guaranteed. RO proofing, guaranteed. State monies are not at risk. Coleman Park grants, the Slocog money, as I forget who mentioned it, but Slocog is always a little bit nervous if projects aren't moving forward immediately and they're looking to pull, pull the money back. But so far, we're not at high risk of, in my opinion at least, in losing any of that funding. We do have two federal, I'm sorry, one federal grant for the recycled water project, and initially, it looked like with the new administration, there might be an issue there. But we later learned that the administration was really targeting grants that might impact someone's ability to, like, drill an oil well. And that isn't really going to be an issue for us. So in talking with federal staff, there's not really a concern there. We don't have a grant agreement for that one yet. That's a $9.3 million grant, but we're working on that very diligently. Right now, we don't see any of our grant funding at risk. The closest one would probably be the Quintana Main through Slocog.
Right. And that's, again, what I was, the roundabout. Oh, no, that's the, oh, oh, but that's kind of in that same, oh, no, Quintana, yeah.
Yes.
Okay. And then I feel like if P-Web saw, heard this in April, and it wasn't really quite this, I would personally, I guess it's a comment, and I won't say it yet. I'll wait.
An open public comment on item 9B.
Sorry, I don't know everyone's name. Can I use public comment time to ask some clarifying questions about what was presented, or can I only make a statement?
You can make a statement. You can ask the questions, and we'll see if we can direct some answers for you.
Okay.
They won't answer them during public comment.
Okay, because it was a clarification. What I thought that I understood from the presentation was that there are six projects that could be completed in an annual cycle, based on a potential of 37 demanded, right? What I didn't understand from the presentation is how many projects are in flight? And, I mean, obviously, I could tell some of your questions led to some of this answering, that, you know, some have grants. But my point is, based on the 1.25 FTE, if there's six potential, what's in flight? What could be stopped without costing more money to stop them, because they have progressed to some point where it is not feasible to make that decision? So to the Matrix presentation idea, I think there needs to be a different way to look at where the projects are in their timeline, where the decision could be made to possibly halt them. I'm not suggesting they should be. But there's a financial impact to stop something. Also, God knows, I looked at our budget, it's been this way for a long time. We don't have a lot of money. They are understaffed. They don't seem to be asking for staff. I don't know if that's always fulfilled through contract or consultant labor, but is there, in fact, a requisition on the table for staff in order to get the project number up, maybe in 2026 budget cycle? That's my comment question. Thank you.
Thank you for that.
Hi, Betsy Goddard Cross, and I think I'm speaking as a member of P-Web. So if that's, is that appropriate?
As an individual member? No, it would be as an individual.
Yes. I apologize for not being clear on all the rules as of yet, so you're going to have to do a lot of schooling, because this is all new to me. First of all, I've only had one meeting, and we didn't discuss any of this. So I don't know if that, if I missed something, but correct me if I'm wrong. There were three projects on there, number seven, 15, and 19, that seemed to be harbor issues, and I'm questioning whether that's really our, something that we're supposed to be dealing with. And also, as I said, I'm just learning everything, but the Morro Creek Bridge damage, could that be something, since it was, it happened during a storm, is that something that FEMA could cover? Anyway, those are my questions.
Anyone else for public comment on this item? AGP, are there any raised hands in the queue?
Yes. No, Madam Mayor, there are no raised hands in the queue.
Thank you very much. With that, I will close public comment and bring it back to council. I can answer a couple of those, and I'll defer to, or I can let Mr. Qualick answer them. The question about the three projects that are harbor-related, Public Works handles all infrastructure, and it's worked collaboratively with those departments, with Harbor Department, with Public Works, or any other entity that crosses over, whether it's recreation parks, all of them work, but the engineers are in Public Works, so they oversee all those. And the first speaker's questions, Mr. Qualick, any answer for that? Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor, and I appreciate the speaker's comments. These are the kinds of very reasonable, logical, rational questions that one might have after looking at this list and say, how do we figure this out? How do we, how do we chop out the fat or the stuff we're just not going to work on? You know, what are we actually working on here? I wish it was that simple. There was a question about, you know, how many projects are in flight? I mean, probably 80% of these? And it's the nature of the life cycle of a capital project that, again, it may not be completed in one year. So it's not as though we can pick up six projects this year, wait until they're done, and then start six more. It's, we may start one, if we're working with a contract engineer to perform design, it may take them nine months to do design. Maybe we have to meet with them once a week for one hour for that nine months, just as an example. Well, that doesn't mean we're now not going to work on something else, because I've got my six, and I'm, I mean, so we take on other work. So just wanted to comment on that. There's also, and I think anyone who's been in business can appreciate this, there's a benefit to a backlog. If we don't have project authorization for more projects than we're working on currently, then we go out of business, right? We need the projects on the backend, so that when we're completing something, or if there's a pause in a project, we can jump to something that's in the backlog. So I think there are some reasonable questions about, are there some things we can remove? And I heard some of those questions from the city council as well. I would say, yes, there are. I just, as a caution, some of those might be very painful to take off the list. Some of those might be things that people in the community really care about or really want to see, and the city council would vote to tell us to not do them. And so I'm not saying it's a bad idea or a good idea, but, you know, we could be talking about not doing Coleman Park. We could be talking about not doing the pickleball courts. We could be talking about not upgrading a restroom that people are upset about at The Rock or at, at, at Money Young. We could be talking about pushing back Bets Hall. Now, we're in the middle of that one, but I'm not recommending that. There was also a comment about FEMA, if they can cover some of this stuff. FEMA doesn't do any physical work. Actually, they create a very complicated and arduous process for us to engage with them in for several years, so that we can get 75% of the cost of the project, and then we, we have to do the work. So we really are very engaged with FEMA, but that, in itself, is a drain. You know, just going back to the other point, do we have to do a storm drain analysis? No. But then the next time it floods, the question's going to be, what have you done since the last flood? Well, so when we're, when we're going about these projects, we really are trying to work in the best interest of the city and work at the direction of the city council. In many ways, we would welcome, you know, knocking out 15 of these or something. But it, I, I don't think that's going to be an easy process. I'm up for the challenge if the council wants to go there.
I, I think that, thank you for that. I think that some of the low-hanging fruit was identified already, some of it. And other than that, then it's going to fall on, I think we need, certainly need more information. This is a lot to absorb. You weren't asking for, you know, motions tonight, but more just this conversation to lead to, I think, our very next conversation. And, yeah, the pickleball courts are great, because it's a quality of life and enjoyment issue, but I guess I would arguably say that I want to make sure that the water tanks up in Nutmeg and those areas, because of fire suppression and safety, and how that relates to all of our neighborhood communities and our insurance, are going to be a priority over the bathrooms or the other things, and there's only so much to go around. That's always going to happen. We're always going to choose those things by being responsible. But, and, you know, the comment about FEMA, after just being there last week in Washington, DC, I, I would hope we aren't really spending any time other than what's already in the queue, because based on the national disasters, that that list is going to be so long to even get anything between the fires and the hurricanes and the floods that, you know, other than what's in the queue, and we did have that conversation with them, you're going to be spinning your wheels for a long time. And I think we just have to choose other paths. Comments? Go ahead. Thank you.
I guess my, my question to council would be, how, and you also, Director Qualick, is how this fits into moving forward into our goal setting? Because obviously, public infrastructure has been a massive, I mean, it is, you know, one of our four key categories. So obviously, you know, I was hoping to get somewhere tonight, and it doesn't seem like it's a possibility of necessarily, or the answer is not necessarily whittling it down, but more in how do we approach it from a goal-setting standpoint, when we know we've got 37 like this, and just your thoughts.
Are there any, are there any joint meetings scheduled with the advisory board yet to go over any of this?
We, thank you for the question. We do have a joint meeting scheduled with Harbor Advisory Board to talk about the revetment and seawall assessment. That's all.
That's the only, that's the only item right now. I think we probably need to have a greater conversation about that, because I see that as a more, working with Army Corps engineers being in Washington, and those funding options being much more long-term. But thank you, I'm sorry, Councilmember.
Mayor, let me, Mayor, I would like to address Councilmember Mayor Purtem Adworth's question regarding the goal and the goal setting. And so what, how I, what I see this list is just my feeling, just kind of, I sympathize what has been shared tonight. And from the city manager's perspective, I see these, the list, and the needs, and the resource allocation, and it is very challenging. And it's a good time, we talk about it, because we're getting into strategic planning and 10-year projection and so on and so forth. So I would, the solution, the solution is going to be difficult. But one thing I wanted to emphasize is going to be priority-based approach on a lot of things we do. We have limited resources, and we, our needs are not going to be reduced anytime soon. So we needed to maximize our resources. As suggested earlier, sometimes we may have to reallocate, free up some spaces, so that we can get some priority and things handled. And so that's one of the, one of the, one of the guiding principles I'm going to use for this year's budget, budget development. And the other thing is collaboration and the leverage of each other's strength. We do have very talented staff, and as you've seen it tonight. And with Public Works Department, Finance Department, and I, we've been talking about this capital improvement project for a while. We initially started out, all of us were frustrated with the budget module, and we, we couldn't find, and the things that perhaps has been on the books for a few years, but we, it was a bit challenging to find out where we are on some of the projects. And just as CFAC member stated at the last week's CFAC meeting, it was difficult, and we actually made a progress. And as a result, we were able to provide a summary at CFAC meeting on some of the major EQ funded projects. And we're going to continue that effort. So all of ours, the Public Works Department and Finance are going to work together to make it a more streamlined process, where we're going to look, looking at that, so that we can free up, if there's things to free up, and then reallocate towards the priority. So that's, those are a couple of things come out of today's discussion, and then can lead to the future goal-setting discussion. Also, we also talk about a long-term financial plan, and you have that, and that can feed back to how to feed, how to fund these projects, right? You have to have the money. And so I think there's a few things come out of this discussion that we can feed back to, to the goal setting. And of course, again, you as city council have to make those decisions, and then give us as, consider them as your short-term action thing, and short-term action items. And then, then through that process, we'll give staff, give city manager the direction to work on those things.
Thank you, city manager. I think that it was a lot of information to absorb tonight, and being able to take some time and review that slide deck and all those things, and, you know, encourage the community as well as council to reach out to, you know, staff, to Public Works, to the finance director, and ask these questions about money funding and projects and things. We can get some more information and get their, Councilmember Edwards, did you have anything else? Thank you.
Yeah, I just want to say thank you so much for the four of you being here tonight and taking the time to review this with us, and going into such great detail, and trying to help us wrap our minds around it. So I really appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I'll just reiterate, the two items that would help me evaluate this from a policy perspective would be P-Web's input. And then secondly, I'm like a dog on a bone on this criteria matrix. I just listed six items. I like the phrase that the woman used, in-flight. But I wrote down current percentage of completion, cost of pause, adequate staffing, urgency regarding risk to public health and safety, funded or unfunded, and then additional time to complete, or time till completion. I'm going to send the director that list in hopes that we may see that criteria matrix. Thank you.
And I think, understanding that, as you had shared, the time, Mr. Qualick, it takes to refine that, I think we're looking for maybe just the generalization, as we can look at some of the projects, and we could look at a more finite questions if we had them, but just not having some of that information does make it a little challenging with that. So however you feel you can approach, that might help us help make those decisions. And I would agree. And I would agree. Thank you to all three of you. We're very fortunate to have these two engineers here. Cindy, thank you for everything you do, and Damaris, for holding the fort down there. Councilmember Landrum?
Yeah, I guess I just want to say I agree completely with Councilmember Echols about P-WAB reviewing this. According to what you've said, it sounds like they haven't seen this with the pictures and the projects have maybe somewhat changed, and I think, I would feel, none of us up here are engineers, and that's their, that's why we have them, and I would feel a lot better had they done this first. And I want to get more clarity on how we end a project because I'm not clear on, I didn't follow what you were saying. I want to know exactly what to do.
So when we end a project is when construction is completed?
No, no, I mean, like, if we decide we don't, we don't want it, we want to abort a project.
Well, if, here's what I'm hearing, and tell me if this sounds right to you. We take some similar report to the P-WAB, maybe with a more refined matrix. We have P-WAB provide their input on it. Maybe we take it to HAB as well since they're involved with the harbor projects. And then, you know, we do some analysis in-house, and then we take this back to council and we say, hey, here's our recommended projects for the next, I don't know, four years or something, three years. And here are some projects we think we could drop off, and what do you think? And maybe council has some other ideas, and they could give us the input at that time. But if we want to end projects, then we would do it then. I would just add that the challenge is, to end a project, you know, some of them have minor impacts, some of them are regional projects, we've made commitments, we have agreements, we have loans. And so we're trying to have a balance between presenting high-level information, but then also presenting enough information for the council to make a decision on. So there might be some projects where we'd recommend, okay, let's separate those out and bring them back and have a conversation about them. Maybe we don't need the in-depth information about 37. Maybe it's just, hey, we've identified these six that we're curious about, and then we can bring those back for discussion.
I don't think I was clear enough. I guess I should specifically say, like, for instance, like, the roundabout, because that is a project that's hanging around that has a lot of general fund money attached to it that it sounds like we haven't proceeded very far with. And for instance, we could use that money to fix, like, the beachcomber drain, storm drain situation, or something like, that would be more of an imminent health and safety issue.
Sure, so I'll try to answer.
So how do, how do we go about?
So step one.
Something like that.
Step one, staffer finds the matrix. Step two, we take it to P-WAB. Step three, we bring a report to the City Council, high level. The City Council can decide from a high-level basis, which they'd want to carve out to look at separately because that's going to require more in-depth information to cancel a project. We go back to the City Council with, let's say, three, four, five projects, whatever you choose, and say, what do you want to do with these three? Here's the in-depth information. You now have the information you need, and then you can decide to kill a project or keep it.
Well, I just wouldn't want something like that to go too far where we have, that involves, you know, sub-consultants and we're sinking more money into it for no, when we're, you know, we realize we maybe want to use that money for something else, more important.
I appreciate that consideration. If you have an alternative process, we'd be happy to consider it.
Right, so just maybe, go ahead.
Okay, Mayor, would you like to?
I was just going to say, I think that a lot of those, when you talk about stopping the project, as Mr. Qualick was sharing, they're in process and we have contracts. So it's going to be, how far are we into a contract and what, you know, what are the ramifications if you cancel that contract versus what, how much further do we go to complete the contract to that point? Maybe not entering into more contracts for more studies or more something, whatever the project is. It seems we're talking about the roundabout. We'll just use that for simplicity's sake, you know? Don't enter into other contracts, but do we need to finish what it is? And I think until you can bring back that information, that's a project that's passed on to somebody else that's not ours. So, you know, if we were to stop right now, would we still be obliged to pay the contract? I don't know the answer, but I would guess probably yes, you know?
Well, using that one as an example, it sounds like it's been postponed and the contractor hasn't started it or has been delayed in their, in it, so it just seems like it might be a good time.
I would add that if there's some urgent project, let's say the roundabout, where, and by urgent, I mean it's of council interest to review more quickly, we could just bring that, we can bring more information about that to the City Council at a separate meeting without going through that whole P-WAB process.
Okay, thank you. So that's like a future agenda item to agendize that? Okay, thank you. That's what I was wanting to know.
Thank you. I think everybody is. Thank you again for the presentation. Do you have enough information to take next steps for right now? Thank you. Okay. Thank you all so much. Future agenda items?
I would like to agendize a conversation on the roundabout and what, based on what our conversation here tonight, finding out whether, at what stage we're in with the consultant and whether, you know, just looking at the general fund money that's tied to that and kind of comparing with the budget coming up and goals and all of these things, it seems like it might be a good time to reevaluate that.
Do I have council support for that?
Yeah, I'd support that.
I'll support that. It's fine.
Thank you. Any other future agenda items? Mr. LaFay? No. To my left, Mr. Echols? No? Well, that we are dismissed. Thank you. We're adjourned, excuse me.